Okay, come back to order, please. Welcome to the continuation of the six o'clock Lompoc City Council meeting and the 6:30 joint session with the Parks and Recreation Commission. There is no reportable action from the closed session today. We were having a discussion with regard to the evaluation of the city administrator. And now Pastor Federman, would you all please rise?
Dear God, Creator of the heavens and the earth, and Creator of each of us, we pause to say thank you for your blessings in our lives, our family, our friends. We thank you for the leaders who stand here in these council chambers, and we thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this country and the blessings of living in this region of the planet. It seems, dear God, that the most difficult mathematical equation for us to master is that of counting our blessings. We often miscount what we have left while we focus on the things that we have lost. But we are grateful that in you we find wisdom and the ability to count our blessings and to solve even the toughest problems. So tonight I pray that you give wisdom to our mayor, our city council, our city administrator, and all those who work and serve in this community. May they seek you and in so doing find the strength available that they need in this time. Give them discernment to recognize your wisdom that may arrive sometimes through the voice of another. May our community be marked by its ability to collaborate and move forward and not simply whine and complain over issues. Give our leaders and citizens the courage to step forward, to add value to our neighbors, and to look for ways to enhance our neighborhoods. Guide and protect those who protect us, our police, fire departments, our military neighbors. And we pray, oh God, for those directly involved in the events of yesterday in our town. And I am grateful that our offices are safe and that more lives were not lost or harmed. Guard their hearts and their minds of those who were involved in yesterday's tragedy and the witnesses and the neighbors as well. And be with our young people as they graduate this week and the next week, and help them celebrate their accomplishments in a sensible and sane manner. May this meeting be profitable, and may we all do our part to see Lompoc keep moving forward. Bless this community, oh God, and for this we are grateful. In your powerful name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for And now we'll have a presentation from Dr. Mark Schnipp, sorry if I did it wrong and I forgot to ask, and Joe Armandarez on the Chumash Camp Four project and the economic impacts to the Lompoc Valley.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn, members of the council. I'm Joe Armandarez. I'm the executive director for the Santa Barbara County Tax Payers Association, the Santa Barbara Technology and Industry Association. I'm here tonight with my colleague, Dr. Mark Schnipp, as the mayor pointed out, from the California Economic Forecast. Dr. Schnipp and I have been taking what you're about to see, this presentation, to all the various city councils in the county as part of an effort to kind of, you know, get the thinking in the county around the idea of economic vitality, forming strategic partnerships and relationships with the private sector in order to maximize job creation and economic activity in the county. As we read the paper every day and watch the news, we all understand that the zeitgeist of this decade is the economy, jobs. How do we create more economic, you know, dynamic activity out there in the economy? And what can policymakers like yourselves and people in the city of Carpinteria do to, you know, create that situation? Dr. Schnipp has a presentation that's relatively short, but I think it will highlight and identify certain areas and certain sectors of the economy that are poised for growth. And as a result, I think you'll come away understanding the relationship between development, resource development, and revenue, particularly discretionary revenue in the area of property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes, and the like. And so there's no action being asked for tonight. We're just here for informational reasons. I see the mayor raising his hand.
Ron, could you get staff to open the wall, please? I see you out there. Thanks, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
People can't see.
Mr. Lynn, I appreciate the opportunity. As I said, no action is being requested of you tonight, just informational presentation only. But if you do have any questions as it relates to the project, obviously Dr. Schnipp can address those. If you have any issues or questions specific to the Camp Four project, which you will hear about tonight, particularly some of the areas that deal with the fiduciary trust and some of those other sort of esoteric issues surrounding that, I'd be happy to come up and answer those questions to the best of my ability. So having said that, I will introduce to you Dr. Mark Schnipp.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Welcome, Mark.
All right, I want to start by giving you a quick, brief update of what is going on in the California economy, Santa Barbara economy, real fast, and then segue that into talking about some of the economic impacts that we can expect from the Camp Four housing project, and for that matter, from almost any type of housing project of similar size that would get developed or get built in Santa Barbara County. Now let me start here. Let me just ask this question. Is California economy growing again? And a lot of people will say, no, not yet. But it actually is, it's just having a real hard time. What this picture shows is month by month, job creation going back about 36 months. And for the last 25 months, we've created about 390,000 jobs in California. You can see it's very inconsistent, but nevertheless, the last several months has been positive. The bars are above the line, not below it. So there is job creation, but it looks like it's really not gaining a lot of traction right now. But we are creating jobs, needless to say, in California right now. Now here's the same picture for this county, Santa Barbara. Last 25 months, about 5,800 jobs. All right? So again, it's positive, but it kind of ebbs and flows through time. But at least we're back creating jobs again, not losing them. What kind of jobs are we creating? Well, that's kind of the issue here, because most of them are temporary help jobs and administrative services jobs, temp jobs. Before employers commit to permanent types of jobs, they hire a lot of attempts first. And so we're seeing that being the number one industry. Then healthcare, then a little bit in manufacturing, principally food processing, because agriculture's done so well in recent years. And then hardly anything else. You can see retail trade, we're still down. Not a lot of broad-based participation from a lot of sectors yet. In California, most of the jobs are being created in coastal counties. The technology sector is the number one industry right now in California. I'll show you some evidence of that. Public sector's still downsizing, so that's producing a drag on the recovery. Hiring has picked up in the inland areas just recently, but it's the coastal areas that is leading the charge. Export markets, big industry, next to technology. Tourism also rising. So really, the big three is technology, export sectors, and the visitor industry. And it's demographics of California, and for that matter, of the nation, that is really largely responsible for the very, very high rates of unemployment that we're seeing right now. I'll talk a little bit about that. Here's exports through the California ports. And March was an all-time record high. So you can see it dipped down during the recession, it's come back very, very strong. It's now one of the leading engines of growth in California right now, exports out of our ports. Okay? And then here, employment in computer systems design. All right? That's at an all-time high. There's very few employment sectors in California that are at an all-time high, hardly anything. But in technology, technology components particularly related to computers and design, that's way up there. Here's leisure and hospitality or the visitor industry in California. It's trying to make a comeback, not quite there yet, but is growing every single month. And then here's Santa Barbara County, not quite the same. Tried to make a comeback, it's kind of leveled off. We're not seeing a lot of tourism jobs being created right now. Let me turn to Lompoc a little bit. Here is the home price in Lompoc going back to 2001, all the way through 2011. Tried to make a comeback there in 2010, really didn't. 2011's kind of leveled off. It's right around $200,000 for the median price home. And then if I look at this same thing monthly, going back to 2009, all the way through May of this year, in particularly last few months, about the last eight months, we've actually seen prices kind of erode even further in the Lompoc Valley area. And why is that? Well, I think it has to do with the fact we've actually seen foreclosures kind of bump up here in the city of Lompoc. So until those foreclosures all get cleared out and a lot of that homeowner distress, it's going to weigh in on prices in the Lompoc area. So we're waiting for that to clear out, and then you'll see prices start to stabilize and real estate start to catch up. In general, development in California, there hasn't hardly been any, and that has caused all this downsizing. And in construction, you can see the top axes there, just a few years ago, we had 900,000 people. Now we have 550,000. 400,000 construction workers out of work. Okay? Big hit, biggest industry decline of any sector. And it's because we're not producing hardly any homes. Here's through March of 2012, homes by month in California, it's been just a slide. Okay? You can see a little bit of activity, we're trying to come back, but we haven't really produced much residential, many residential structures at all. Okay? And it's really taken its toll on the construction industry, which is another drag on the overall recovery. Here's the same picture, but for Santa Barbara County. No rebound at all. We're at depression level of construction employment in this county and pretty much in the state. No turnaround yet. And it's because we haven't built. Here's housing going in Santa Barbara County, going all the way back to 1961. You can see the last few years, virtually nothing, no development. Okay? So and of course, that is one of the big reasons why we've lost so many construction workers, and it's had a real deleterious economic impact on the county, and for that matter, the state. Here's residential activity, units permitted in the Lompoc Valley. So it includes not only the city, but the incorporated area too. And you can see it was anywhere between 50, 70 homes every year in the entire greater valley area, but the last three years, there's been virtually no activity at all. Let's talk a little bit about this population. 42,000 as of 2012. About 16,000 people are employed. The unemployment rate is estimated at 13.6%. Median household income's about 45,000 per household. Median home price right now is about 182,000. New residential units, there were none in 2010. There were 23 in 2011. And in 2012, well, there's the last few years of new residential homes going in Lompoc, virtually none. Okay? And then you can see in 2012 now, there's been this surge, a large housing project just pulled its permits in the last month or two. Let me segue that into Camp Four housing now, and what a housing project actually does in terms of economic stimulus. And this was done under very conservative assumptions. Let's talk about this real quick. A 1,400-acre piece of property in the San Ynez Valley. The Camp Four project is 143 homes, okay, for the Chumash tribe, and includes an admin building as well. It's assumed to commence in July of this year with entitlement process. And groundbreaking then would occur in a year from now, mid-2013, with site improvements and grading. Then the construction of the homes and the building would occur in 2015 and 2016. And of course, what we have recently done is determine some of the economic impacts that would accrue in terms of jobs and income associated with the project. So I want to just give you those really quickly now, present that. Two scenarios that the tribe was looking at, a low-cost scenario of housing and a high cost. So for the 143 homes, they would, the project would be either 132 million or 179 million, depending upon what size and the amenities of the homes that they would be built. The entitlement process would occur beginning this year and end next year, be a year-long process. Site work would then occur 2013 and 2014. Phase one of the construction would occur in 2015, phase two 2016. Admin building late 2015 into 2016, project would be completed sometime in 2017. Okay? So what would that produce? Well, again, with the entitlement process, with the groundbreaking, with the site improvements, you would have these kind of construction impacts that would occur through time in Santa Barbara County. There's going to be a number of jobs created in Santa Barbara County, okay, where the peak years would be 2015 and 2016, the years in which you would build phase one and phase two of the housing. And you can see that, well, here, let me go back. You can see that approximately 200 to 275 construction jobs would be created for this housing project in the peak years. And if I use that same picture, but then I make it into lines because I'm going to talk about scenarios one and two, the high cost and the low cost, you can see scenario two, which is the higher cost would create even more jobs because they would be larger homes with more amenities, more finished work, more specialty contractors would be involved. We'd need anywhere between 275 and 360 construction jobs to be created in the peak year of the Total employment impacts, now counting real estate, retail trade, all the building materials that would be needed, all sectors of the economy, 350 to 425 more jobs would be created as a result of Camp Four in the peak year, which would be 2015, 2016 time period from this housing project. And then you'd have spending impacts, because a lot of the materials, not all of them, but then furnishings and fixtures and carpet and things like that would be purchased for these homes, as well as a lot of building supplies, although the majority of them would not come from Santa Barbara County. And that would be $18 million in retail, in total sales, and 14 million in retail sales in, probably most of those would occur in the Galita Valley, the Lompoc area, the San Ynez Valley, and the Santa Maria Valley area. And then income, going to construction workers, going to total workers in the entire county that where jobs would be created, about $80 to $100 million economic impact under both scenarios would range. And then with some of the tribe members, of course, then moving into the new homes, they would be selling their old homes. We'd have another 35 to 48 or so more home sales that would occur, perhaps even more than that. So there'd be home sales, and then people would move into those, and then they would need to furnish that, and that would produce additional economic impacts through the multiplier process. So the summary is, depending upon the scenario and the year, anywhere between 100 to 360 new construction jobs created just for this project alone during the peak years, and between 350 and 425 total jobs for all sectors created as a result of the project. Okay? $100 million in income, 18 million in taxable sales, and a few more home sales in the region. So again, 143 home project has this extent of economic impacts that would land in Santa Barbara County. Much of the impacts don't land in the county, and of course, we haven't added those in, but those that would are presented here. Okay? That's the, a quickie on the economic update and what Camp Four might bring to Santa Barbara County. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have a question? Okay, nope. You got to weigh easy on that one, no questions. Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Nope. Okay, Joe, you're off the hook too. Thank you very much for bringing your information to us. And the good news is that one housing tract that you track now have two to track, plus our other contractors now up to the number of he's building, so life is good here. So good news for us. Okay, city administrators, status report.
Honorable mayor, council members, audience, and viewers, it's been nearly one year since the council appointed Single Purpose Committee work to review the city's building, engineering, and planning development review permit procedures, and provided council recommendations identifying where the city and has control and can simply simplify the process to benefit our customers. So tonight I would like to take this opportunity to respectfully provide an overview, reporting for you what has been done to date to implement the committee's recommendations. And I'd first commend and acknowledge the committee members who served on the Single Purpose Committee, dedicating five months, meeting two twice a month, and to provide this valuable service to the city council, and ultimately, the Lompoc community and our customers. The Single Purpose Committee Chair, Jim White, working with committee members Aaron Briggs, James Dixon, Michael Simenski, and Oscar Warner, made several recommendations to council, which was presented and approved at the July 5, 2011 regular council meeting. Recognizing that each applicant comes to the city with different needs and expectations, but each hoping for timely, consistent, and fair process, the committee identified that our customers are top priority, and toward that goal, the committee recommended a customer service policy be implemented throughout the city organization, a charter of excellence in service, adopting a standard that encourages all city staff to help applicants find solutions and make their project work in a complicated world of federal, state, and local regulations. In response to this recommendation, in order to develop and implement a citywide standard for customer service, Human Resources Manager, Beth Flamm Overby, worked in concert with all department heads and their management teams to develop a comprehensive charter memorializing a standard that was approved by council in November 2011. The charter has been implemented citywide, recently reemphasized through mandated customer service training, incorporating the committee's identified key components for improved service, including empowering staff to make decisions at the lowest possible level, using electronic communications such as email and voicemail, ensuring staff return phone calls and emails promptly, and use the out-of-office messaging when staff is knowingly unavailable, and creating a process providing the applicant a schedule that involved, involves, that all involved work by, and encouraging all staff to take ownership of a project, commit, and follow through. The committee additionally identified a need to enhance the functionality of our city hall lobby. And in response, a team of executive staff assessed the lobby for its functionality, and identified some short-term, low- or no-cost improvements, such as the placement of brochure holders and improved signage, which are now in place, and as, well, removing poles previously used to rope off the counter space from the lobby. And we found that simply removing the poles and the ropes opened up the lobby, creating an improved usage of our limited space at the customer counter. The committee also recommended that the staff be encouraged to invest in the community through involvement. And I am pleased to report that the city staff are very committed on an ongoing basis to our community, whether through involvement in local church, youth sports, civic organizations, serving on boards of local nonprofits, or their involvement in other community activities. A recent example of staff's investment in our community is the Employee Development Association organization, which sponsored a team, a city team, for this year's cancer relay life and raised more than $5,000 for this community event. As well, you know, this past weekend, Police Captain Larry Ralston and the Police Department, working in tandem with several city division staff, and from the Solid Waste, Parks and Parks, Urban Forestry, and others who volunteered, all worked with faith-based volunteers to clean up and beautify our community, and all are to be commended. Also addressed, in an effort to simplify and expedite the planning division procedures, the Single Purpose Committee recommended council approve the zoning administrator function to specifically review the, approve minor, small projects, eliminating the requirement for these projects having to go through a more time-involved planning commission approval process. And while council approved the zoning administrator function, the committee recommended council approve this function on a one-year trial basis that is subsequently reevaluated. Thus, staff will return to council this fall to report measurable results since implementing the planning zoning administrator function. Reviewing the city environmental review guidelines, the committee encouraged the use of categorical exemptions over the use of negative declarations, reducing planning staff's work time. In response, planning staff use categorical exemptions whenever possible. Also recommended by the committee is the use of online software technology capabilities to improve project status tracking. And in response, the city implemented the online project tracking system called Tracket, and provides a secure, we provide secure online access to applicants. And contact information regarding this tool is available on the city's website, link to our homepage at cityoflompoc.com. The Single Purpose Committee addressed that the city be prepared for future increases in development activity, and we respond, and that we respond with appropriate planning staffing, both in short term and long term. And at present, the division uses contractors and consultants on a short-term solution to address increases in the workload. And the long-term staffing demands, however, will need to be addressed in the next budget cycle. The Single Purpose Committee emphasized the importance of promoting a strong sense of working together as we strive to make Lompoc the best community possible. Again, I commend the committee members who committed their valuable volunteer time to this important effort, and also commend Mayor Lynn, the council members, our department heads, and all city staff, who together work diligently to consistently provide our customers the highest level possible of service. And an important next step toward fully implementing the Single Purpose Committee's recommendations is the development of an effective mechanism for receiving customer feedback related to the city's level of services provided to our customers. However, I am pleased to report that a good measure of our success thus far is through the numerous letters and verbal expressions of gratitude we receive from our external and internal customers, committing city staff for excellence in customer service. Mr. Mayor and council, together we strive to continuously improve how we provide city services to make Lompoc the best community possible. And thank you for allowing me this time, and I have no other announcements or requests. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember, start.
Not a question, just a comment. Most of you out there know that the Healthcare District in Lompoc is attempting to remodel and restore the old hospital for a project, it's going to be called the Champion Center. The architects that are working on that project are the same architects that worked on building the new hospital. They recently commented to the Board of Directors for the Healthcare District, the comment was something like this, it was, wow, what happened at city hall? When they're building the new hospital, they had really mountains to climb, walls to walk through, it was like banging their heads on the wall. They said, this project, very complicated yet, they said it was so much smoother, people were very friendly, so the project, the customer service project is working, as witnessed by the architects that are going to be remodeling the old hospital. So, thank you.
And I'd like to be a firsthand witness to our city staff being involved in the community. Chief Leo Garza is now trained to drive a city dump truck after Make a Difference Day, so be sure you put that service to work in your department. Okay, seeing no other lights, we'll move forward. Are there any staff requests and announcements? Nope. Okay. Oral communications, okay, there's a lot of you out there, so. And some of you haven't been here before, so let me, sit down, Nick. If you're here to talk about an item that's on the agenda... If you're here to talk about an item that's on the agenda, and you can stay, please don't talk now, because we get confused. If you have to leave and you want to talk about something later on the agenda, it's okay, but if you can stay, hang on to it. If you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, come on down. Now, or the consent calendar, yes, sorry about that.
City Council, my name's Charles Summer, and I'm here representing PJ's Deli. This last weekend, we had our 30th anniversary, and we gave 30 sandwiches away to our first 30 customers, and since I didn't see any of you there, I decided to come with a menu, a coupon for a free sub, and inside is our commemorative 30th anniversary pen.
All right. And I recommend the Angie, for those of you who haven't been there.
Do you have one for everyone in the audience?
I have not one for everyone in the audience, sorry, Ken, but I did bring one for someone that does go misrepresented here, and that's Judy Baker, who puts in a lot of work, and she's in the back, and we'll give that to Stacy, and then I wanted to give a couple of our staff members here a coupon, too, so thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, councilmen and fellow citizens. I have something that I think shouldn't be on the consent calendar, should be under a public hearing, and that would be item 11, response to the 2011-2012 Santa Barbara County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled "Requiem for Redevelopment." Having read this, it occurs to me, with what's going on, and it's not that I don't trust the city council or the mayor or anyone else here, because I think you people have done a great job so far, but this should be public, this should be very public, because this might well represent millions of dollars that the citizens of this city are going to have to cough up at some point. So this needs to be looked at, and it needs to be looked at publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc, and the previous speaker took the words right out of my mouth. I had this circled, and I would petition that the council remove this and put it on the schedule tonight, and if that's not possible, to agendize it at a different time, and if that's not going to be the decision, then I will come back and speak about points of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to talk about number 11?
No.
Okay.
I just want to be brief and talk about Saturday. I know the city administrator already mentioned it, but we were very honored to collaborate, and I use that word with emphasis, to collaborate in goodwill with Larry Bean and Cindy McCall, Danny Laura, Claudia Stein, the Solid Waste Division, Captain Larry Ralston, Captain Don Demming, as we went out, and with 12 churches besides my own congregation, and 291 volunteers, put in at least five hours, some people worked six, and we found out just today that some people worked seven hours, so I don't know what that counts as labor, 291 people, five to seven hours, you do the math, but because the city was so helpful, we were able to add, I think, some value to our town. The long fence behind the old Vons and the Dewey Center got painted, 36 gallons of paint was used, they had the holy rollers out there painting. Well, they used rollers there from churches, so I don't know what else to call them, and Home Depot donated flowers, we planted the entrance to the city, we cleaned up some weeds along the Caltrans property, don't tell them, and we were able to pick up a lot of trash, and thank you, Councilmember Costa, for being there, and Mayor Lynn was there as well, and if anybody else, I miss them, but the city had a very open attitude, and this being our third year, I think we've even gained some momentum, and I just want to commend the city staff for their willingness to be there, and, you know, when Solid Waste arrived at, you know, 6:05 a.m. with great smiles on their faces, and we have a new guy doing graffiti, his name is Slow, but he's anything but slow, he was very helpful, had all the paint we needed and the supplies, and I just want to commend the city for allowing the faith-based groups to come out and to serve our community, and thank you all for letting us do so.
Thank you. Bernie, can we up your quota next year to three roll-off boxes full? All right, thank you. So anyone else would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, and we'll come back to the council for the consent calendar, and I'm going to read them, and then you will go after it. So we have item number one, approval of the minutes, item number two, approval of the expenditures, three voucher batches and a payroll batch, if there's one on there for me or Smitty's Towing, I abstain, item number three, award of resolution number 5792/12, design criteria, streets for the permit parking during the Flower Festival, number four, closing portions of H Street and Ocean Avenue for the Flower Festival, item number five, partial public drainage easement vacation at 9:41 Clemens Way, no, that doesn't mean we go to the beach, number six, notice of the general municipal election on November 6, 2012, and request to the Board of Supervisors to consolidate the election and adopt the city council policy requiring deposits for candidate statement, we go together with the county and it saves us money, number seven, renewal of the Mental Health Mobile Crisis Services Agreement for fiscal year 2012-2015, this is an agreement with the county to provide emergency mental health services to the police department when we have a distraught individual for a contract amount not to exceed $61,599 for two years, item number eight, approval of the NCPA Legislative and Regulatory Affairs Program Agreement, a second reading, item number nine, unclaimed property stale-dated checks, so, item number 10, the Beatty Park Disc Golf Course Expansion, and item number 11, response to the 2011-2012 Santa Barbara County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled "Requiem on Development," and I will personally move that we pull that one. What is the timeline on that, city administrator?
I'm going to defer to Brad Wilkie for the timeline.
The report was received on March 5, and it was due back to the grand jury 90 days after that, which was probably today.
Today, okay, we'll move this to the end of the agenda, and then we'll see how we do. Okay, and are there any other items a council member would like to pull? Councilmember Starbuck.
No, I was just going to go ahead and request that we pull item 11, but I'll second your motion.
Okay. Are there any objections to pulling number 11? Seeing none, it will be the last item on the agenda this evening. Is there any discussion? I got to do one thing. All you disc golf guys, stand up. Up, I see some of you over there. All right, so this is, you're not going to get to talk, because this is a consent item, but let's hear it for them. All right, I accept a motion to approve the consent calendar. I think you've got the fear faster on the button. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll let Ms. Costa go ahead and make the motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
And a second, okay. And is there any discussion at this time? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, our favorite, number 12, the GAN initiative and how Brad is going to find $32,708,000
Mayor Lynn, councilmembers, before I start this item, I was asked to give a brief summary of what we've been doing on the Oversight Board for the former redevelopment agency. The Oversight Board was formed as part of ABX 26 to provide guidance and approval of our enforceable obligations. The group met beginning on March, no, April 9 was the first meeting, and it had three meetings after that, ending up on May 21 for the last one, where the enforceable obligation schedules for both the January through June and the July through December period were approved. Between April 9 and May 21, the Oversight Committee reviewed the items that were on the ROPS and decided to take.
Say what ROPS, it's got a new audience.
Require an obligations payment schedule, so, that schedule, which the Department of Finance approved on May 25, provides for the payment to the city of the money we need to pay those enforceable obligations. Three things were removed by the Oversight Board between April 9 and May 21, the three were, kind of in total, we had three loans between the agency and the city, those were disapproved because they were specifically addressed as part of AB 26, blight removal operations, and the PAL MOU agreement for, to provide after-school programs at the school was removed. The other things that were removed as part of AB 26, kind of en masse, was any programs that the agency had used to do with tax increment, which would include things such as the masonry work in Old Town. Those things just don't exist anymore because they were not enforceable obligations, and they were just programs, or, in our case, were just getting off the ground. So, that was just a real brief synopsis of what the Oversight Board has been doing and what has happened with redevelopment in the last two and a half, three months.
Would you tell the audience how much money the state of California stole from us by making the loans that the redevelopment agency owed us null and void?
The remaining balance on the three loans as of January 31 was about $125,000, so those had been paid on for the last 10 to 12 years, and the state decided they didn't exist anymore. So, I'll move on now to the GAN appropriation limit. This is a statutorily required public hearing, otherwise it would probably be on consent. In 1979, and again in 1991, voters approved a couple propositions that required city governments, and probably most governments in California, to go through this process that initially was to provide an upper limit of spending. Because of the way the economy has gone in the last 25, 30 years, and the way city governments are funded, this statutory formula really has become not very applicable. This year, what the calculation made was that our obligation, our appropriations subject to limits is about $14.1 million, but according to the formula, our upper limit of spending is $32.7 million, and obviously, our spending limit is really controlled by our revenue limit, and our revenue far exceeds, our revenue limit far exceeds the ability of us to spend that $37 million. We can't spend any more than we get. So, one positive thing is the, this year, the growth factor that is used in this, as well as the population limit, were positive, and in the last year or two, they were much smaller. So, having said that, this is one of those things that needs to be gone through as a public hearing. The facts of Resolution 5788 really is a ministerial act at this point in time, because our appropriations that are subject to limits are really limited by our resources, not by this resolution.
Thank you, Brad. So any public comment on this? Seeing no one rise, thank you. We'll come back for a motion. Somebody make a motion. Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff recommendations.
And a second.
So moved.
Is there any further discussion? And could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you. Just so you all get it, this is just something we have to go through because the law requires it, not because it makes any sense at all anymore, frequently a factor of our life. Item 13, public hearing to consider the ordering of services and improvements, the continuation of assessment for fiscal year 2012-13 for the Lompoc Valley Park Maintenance and Pool Assessment District. Brad, welcome back.
Mayor, councilmembers, it's my pleasure to be back again. The since about the middle of February, we've been going through a series of, not necessarily hearings, but the process to enact this year's assessment for the pool and park oversight assessment. This is the final step in that process. If you decide to approve this resolution, the next step will be by the consultants, who will send the tax roll to the county for inclusion in next year's property tax assessment process. Last meeting, we had a session that approved this public hearing, and that was the presentation of the engineer's report that was effectively approved at that point in time. The engineer's report provides for the budget for the spending of resources in the next fiscal year, and not hearing any questions about those items, I'll just go through a couple of the highlights. The more recent highlights is the request to have the timing system at the pool that is being funded out of impact fees, but it's part of this report, because the requirement of pool district assessment is to have, to show how much the city's contributing, as well as how much the pool assessment district is contributing. If the city didn't do any kind of park improvements or pool improvements, this assessment wouldn't be able to be assessed, because you have to have enough city support to support the assessment, and so that $35,000 approval of the timing system, I actually signed the PO for that today, so that should be going out pretty soon, and it should be in, in time to be part of its budget. My request at this point in time, unless there's any questions regarding any specific items, is to have the public hearing, just one comment about the actual increase in the assessment for a single-family home. The percentage increase was 2.09%, which is less than a maximum that's provided for in the original vote in 2002, which was 3%. That 2.09% increase equates to about 50 cents a parcel. The parcel assessment will be $24.80 if this is approved.
Any questions for Brad? Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brad, on, let's see, it's not, page is not numbered, it's page number three, yeah, three of four, the bottom fiscal impact, and I realize it's a third paragraph, it's a third sentence there, it says, "There's no fiscal impact of the general fund, it's because the fees are being taken out of the impact fees." What is the cost of the study, though? I mean, it says there's nothing to the general fund, but there obviously is a fee.
Are you saying that the study, the impact, the?
The engineer's report, yes.
The engineer's report is actually a cost that comes off out of the assessment itself, so it's roughly $12,000 a year, and it's not just engineer's board, it's also the work that they provide to put the assessment roll through the Otter's Office, and that's quite a time-consuming process in itself.
So about $12,000 in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Wilkie, I have last year's report, and this year's report basically mirrors it exactly, but one of the little small errors in here is on page eight, where they're still saying that a specification for the improvements caused by this have been filed with the Director of Parks and Recreation of the city of Lompoc, which we no longer have that particular unit, it's going to have to go either to Director of Parks or Director of Recreation for the 2013 version, and I wanted to make everybody aware that there was the 50 cent increase per parcel.
Any other questions? Came and opened the public hearing. This is This is your moment to talk to us about this item if you have a comment on this. Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, back to council. Is there any further discussion on this? And if not, I'd accept a motion and a second. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn, I move staff recommendation.
And a second.
So move.
And is there any additional discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you. So y'all, it's going to cost you another 50 cents this year. Okay, item 14, a hearing of objections to destroy weeds and remove rubbish, refuse, and dirt. And Stan, is this one on you? Come on down.
Honorable mayor, city councilmembers, I'm somewhat amazed at how many people are interested in the weed abatement program.
You know, people are very concerned about this and they appreciate your good work.
It's a nuisance. In the interest of brevity, I'll just go ahead and give a quick report that we started out with 112 lots that needed abatement. Through several letters of requests for abatement, we're down to 12 at this point. I would suggest that the city council adopt Resolution 5796 so that we can continue to abate the remaining 12.
Stan, how does that compare to last year in terms of this point?
It's a few more than we had last year.
Okay, not a significant change?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I believe that it was my request, I may be asking a bit early, to include the photos of these properties in the staff reports at this point? Or is that at the next step?
Next step.
Okay, thank you.
I would like also say that there are several city lots that haven't been abated, but they have been scheduled to be abated. All city lots have either been cleared or scheduled to be cleared.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here? Oh, sorry. Come on back, I got one, I missed one. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Battalion Chief Hart?
I missed two.
I, at the last hearing, I confirmed something, I just want to confirm it again. We go through a process when residents have their weeds get to a certain length, we go through a process where there's multiple letters, multiple requests, and then we find, we are finally able to get to the point where we are tonight, where we can demand abatement or pay for the abatement and put it on their, I guess, their property taxes, I guess. At this point now, if one of these properties continues to allow the weeds to grow, let's say it's been abated as of today, but in a month from now, the grass is two feet tall. Is it true that we do not have to go through the multiple letters again? We can send them one letter, make one phone call, and then go ahead and make the assessment?
That's affirmative. We have one last letter to send out. And that letter is going to advise the people that there will be administrative fees to the process added if they don't abate it within a certain amount of time.
Right. And let's say they, they do, okay? We're happy, they're happy, they don't get assessing fees, but two months down the road, their property again looks like a jungle. We do not have to go through this long process again, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Just make one phone call to city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a curiosity question. You know Crestview Terrace in the southeast part of town, toward Highway 1 on the hills? Southeast part of town?
Yes.
Close to Highway 1, Crestview Terrace, the whole development. In the hillside, there is, you know, 100 feet, 150 feet that have been cut. Is that, is the city doing that or is that the county?
That's county.
It is the county, so that is not city property?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's Emory's.
I'm sorry, who?
Emory's.
Okay. Okay, I was curious to know if that was city property because there's been a lot of cutting that has been going on over there. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martner, on the east side adjoining Highway 1, there, there are two small parcels that belong to the city, perhaps 50 or 75 feet wide that are at the very bottom of the hill. I think you're talking about up on the back.
I'm talking about the top, but the ones on the bottom also need some weed cutting, the ones right next to Highway 1.
Yes, those are ours.
Those are ours and they need to be cut. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone out there that would like to give testimony on the hearing of destroying the weeds? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, back to council. A motion and a second, please. Who would care to make a motion? Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff recommendations.
And a second.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Go get them, Stan. Okay, coming around to item number 15, a presentation by the Lompoc Parks Recreation and Pool Foundation Subcommittee for the purpose of the Lompoc Valley Motorsports Park at the Lompoc Airport. And I think Lucille's on vacation, so I don't think she's presenting. Tag.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director. And about two weeks ago, the Lompoc Valley Motorsports Park Group came to the city and presented their proposal to us, so. So we pleased to receive the proposal and over, the proposal is a phased project located on approximately 40 acres on the north side of the Lompoc Airport. And there are four main elements to the proposal. And I know the group is going to go into much greater detail on their presentation, but I'll just give you a quick overview and a little background. So the four main elements of the proposal are the racetrack, a spectator area, the pit area, and the off-highway vehicle park area. And all of this is detailed in the project proposal that they have submitted and you all have copies of. Staff has had several preliminary meetings with members of the committee over the last year approximately, and we've all talked and identified different groups that would need to be worked with if we were to move forward together on this project. And some of the different groups that we would need to work with include agencies, the state and federal agencies that we might have to work with on permits and issuance of certain permits, including the Federal Aviation Administration, Caltrans, FEMA, California Department of Fish and Game, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So those things are, you know, all laid out in here and we've discussed them in the past, so there's nothing surprising or new in here. And in the staff report, this is not an exhaustive list, but just to point out all of the different entities that we would be working with moving forward on a project, on this project. And those are laid out in greater detail here, but again, not exhaustive, but to give you an idea of some of the things that lie ahead, working together. The fiscal impact is unknown of the project, although they have outlined very detailed their business plan in here, so they can go over that with, with you today. The applicant is not requesting direct funding from the city for development of the facility. The cost of environmental studies and staff work for the process of the project would be identified with the middle of a project and generally paid for by the applicant. If council would like to consider this and move forward, then staff can return to council with an MOU, setting out timelines and criteria for the process moving forward, and the project would proceed through the city development review process for the proposed project. So that gives you an overview of what we have here. And now I'd like to really turn it over to Carl and Ms. Galavan.
Oh, it's a Jim. Okay. Ms. Galavan?
Yes.
You just mentioned that the cost for staff time would be paid for by the applicant as well?
Typically, generally, that's how it works, but, yeah.
Okay. I, I just want to clarify what you said, thank you.
Okay. And are there any other questions before I turn this over to Mr. Mosby? Okay, great.
Counsel, my name is Jim Mosby, I'm the Chair of the Lompoc Valley Parks Rec and Pool Foundation. For those of you who don't know, the foundation does represent the Lompoc Valley Tennis Association, Lompoc Valley RC Racing Club, Lompoc Valley Barkin Park, Lompoc Disc Golf Association, and the reason why I'm here now, the Lompoc Motorsports Association. And with no further from me, I'd like to introduce Hugh, Carl Creel, and his team.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Jim, for the introduction. Be patient with me, I'm not a public speaker, but I'm going to try and speak for all the motorsport fans here. And it looks from the, all the shirts, I see, we've got quite a few. If you're here for the motorsport facility, would you stand up for a moment, just to show that you counsel the level of support we have? And I'm sure we have more coming because I told them to come at 8:00 and so they'll be drifting in. But we have 10,000 signatures here from supporters and, like I say, I think I'm speaking for a lot of people here in the community. So anyway, as Jim Mosby stated, we're a subcommittee of the foundation and to be a legal subcommittee, we were required by the bylaws to get at least 10 members to work on the project. They had to be paid members of the foundation. So here in this community, I don't think it's, it's not any problem at all to get 10 racers to help with a project like this. So I ended up with more than that and we put in a lot of time working on this. It's taken us over a year to get to this point, which was, I guess, due to the fact that we all have jobs and, and families to take care of and during that time, we've, we've had illnesses, accidents, and lost family members. So it's been a long time coming, but I think everyone's very supportive of it and eager for us to move through. Anyway, the folks that are on the committee have put in a great deal of time working on this and I think they need to be recognized. So I wanted to introduce my committee. And like, I am the chairman. Mr. Will Skyler is the co-chairman. I don't know where he is at the moment, but there he is. Brandon Matsky is our, is our secretary. Some of the other people are Paul Hornberger, who worked very hard, Randy Johnson, Rayon Kendall Leslie, worked tirelessly for the project, Keith Kunkel, Derek McLeish, Ruth McKenna, Robert Dunlap, Jeff Merrich, Josh Hill, Keith Moore, Ed Ross. Like I said, we put in hundreds of hours of this over the, over the past year, so they need to be commended for their efforts because it's a very, well, thankless project, you know, to be meeting, planning, and just continue to beat away at it. So now the, the hard part comes, convincing you to vote for us. The last time we were here, we were, we got a conceptual approval, we got a unanimous approval, and we were told to come back with a business plan and a proposal. So we're back with a vision to build a motorsports park that is a homegrown idea for the locals. It's no corporation. We don't have a lot of money, but it's, it's, it's for the community. We want to build a place where a dad can bring his kids to race and teach him motorsports in a safe environment, whether it's motorcycles or quads, go-karts, or drag racing. We envision bringing the high schools on board with this to duplicate what the Santa Maria High School drag racing team has done. It's, it's taught kids teamwork, they've become quite competitive in the NHRI ranks and we'd like to see the same thing happen here and maybe in some of the other surrounding high schools, so. Another portion of this that I think is real important is that it teaches safety and an idea that we, we took from Irwindale, the city of Irwindale. They, they have something to deter drag racing. I'd like to hand these out so that the councilman can see them. It's a, it's called a racing ticket. If anyone's caught drag racing on the street, they're issued a citation that is good for one trip to the drag strip. And you're required to do that, too. So if you participate, they've discovered that, that trip to the drag strip will pretty much eliminate most of the street racing. And they, they said that at least 90% of it is deterred because of that. So I think we as a community could duplicate that and I would hope that the police and other agencies would, would work with us on that. What else? The other, I think, obvious point is that if you cut down the racing on the streets, there's going to be less young adults killed. And I know that Marilyn has seen in the past the high school students that have been picked up off the street when they've been racing around town and I think the vehicles sitting out in front pretty much illustrates what can happen, so those things alone are just, that, that alone would make this a worthwhile endeavor, so. And I know some people in the community are questioning whether or not this could really work, but you can see from the level of support and the 10,000 signatures that we have that most people do think it will work. But in working on this, we decided we wanted to convince people, so we, we worked on it very diligently and then we decided we would bring in an expert. So we hired Mr. Ron Colson with Track Planting Associates, who is an old-time drag racer, has a lot of experience, and now he's a consultant for projects like this. So I would like to turn this over to him to do a PowerPoint to express the feasibility and the viability of the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl, for your kind words and I've got an unplanned comment that, that was brought to mind by Carl's comments about keeping the kids off the street with the racing activities, even though sometimes those kids are 30 or 40 years old, we find. When I was a high school senior, I have to confess, as a high school student, now this was a sparsely populated part of Illinois, so it was not quite as dangerous as it might seem, but still was not right. Even in my lunch hour, I didn't go eat, I went out and raced somebody in country roads. When I was a senior in high school, I went to Cordova Dragway Park, to my first actual sanctioned racing facility, and I never street raced again after that. At that point, in my mind, I was an actual racer. Street racing was for the amateurs and I think that's a mindset that we hope to create here. Do it where it's safe. There's that interest in people, especially among youth, but there's a right way and a wrong way to do it and we hope to create the right way to do it here. And I, I would hope that a lot of other people would have the experience I had. Maybe they wouldn't be crazy enough to do it for the rest of their life and wander all over the world doing it, but if, if they just do it in a safe manner, it's a benefit to the community and to the individual that's, that's actually doing the right thing for themselves. Now, relative to the facility, the, the book that you've received will be summarized here. It's, there's a lot more information here than, than we've got time to go through, but I want to highlight it in case there's any questions that might arise for the council members and also for a quick overview for the audience. And the, I think you recognize the community there, just happens to have a rocket launch in the background, that's one of your occasional highlights here. The, the thing that we hope to do is to, California, this is, maybe not where this all started, but it's where the drag racing aspect of motorsports, the off-road kind of karting, all of that has, has been tremendous in California. And in many places, it's been squeezed out by the population growth. This area has favorable demographics and statistics and I think one of the questions we want to answer here is, you, you think of major motorsports facilities being in the Los Angeles, Chicago, New York, marketing areas of the world, and really, the, the area around Lompoc with, I believe the population here is, I have it in my mind at about 43,000. I think that's pretty close. And we wanted to take a look at, is it viable to do that? Can that kind of market support it? And as we looked at the numbers, and they are represented in various charts in the complete presentation. And as we looked at the numbers, and they are represented in various charts in the complete presentation, we thought, let's compare Lompoc with some other parts of the country where these things have been successful and where we can take this location and this audience and follow through with the, as it says here in this last paragraph, this concept that was developed by the Lompoc Valley Park Recreation and Pool Foundation and the subcommittee that's grown out of it with the Motorsports Park Committee. And the, this is a 501(c)(3). What is to be built here would be built on city property, so it's a community resource. This isn't something that goes to the financial benefit of, of any individual or corporation. Reducing street racing and the safety that it brings with it is, is a given. That's something that everybody would hope to see. And the, the off-road aspect of it, we tend to focus a little bit on the drag racing side, because that's the, the part of motorsports I was brought in from. But certainly, the off-road aspect is very important. It's very big in California, and it has a good fit here. The, later on, you'll, you'll get comments from Phil Gingrich on the International Hot Rod Association and their interest in sanctioning this body. And the important thing at this point is for the, there's, there's a lot of, of things yet to be done. Earlier, in the presentation, you heard of the various approvals that will have to become a part of this. But approval tonight would help it to move forward and move through those steps. Now, when we look at the, the audience around here, there's a substantial youth market. We, sometimes, I know some people said how this is, is an older audience around here. And of course, everybody can't be a teenager, but there is, in Santa Barbara County and in the city of Lompoc, there's a sizable youth market to, to grow into this sport and, and this type of facility and to support it in the future. And of course, there's a, a substantial customer base in the age that's ready to take advantage of it now. Now, some of the areas that we compared with were Havana, Illinois, which is its nearest population center is in Peoria, Illinois. I think we've all heard the old Hollywood story, when they want to see if something will work in the small parts of the country, it's how will it play in Peoria? Well, that's the audience Havana's playing with, or playing to. Kokomo, Indiana, which is in some proximity to Indianapolis, but, but certainly not in the Indianapolis market. Lyons, Indiana, very much the same. Eddyville, Iowa, small town near Oskaloosa, about 60 miles outside of Des Moines. Cedar Falls, Iowa, that's even further away from Des Moines, the population center of that part of Iowa. It's a combined community with Waterloo of about 150,000 in total in the two communities. The, if we look at the population trends, the growth factors and so forth, and we measured those on U.S. Census Bureau figures at 25, 50, 75, 100, and 125 miles. And Lompoc, as compared to these other communities, leads them in the growth factors at 25, 100, and 125, and is second at 50 miles. The only place that, that there's any advantage that goes to the other communities is at the 75-mile range, which basically establishes that this is a fair comparison. If we look at what happens in those communities, we can reasonably expect it to happen in the Lompoc area. The per capita income, you've got better growth in the income here. In fact, there's one of these that even has a negative figure. That's the one that didn't play in Peoria, I guess we'll have to say. But at 7.4%, well, I take that back. The Kokomo, Indiana did come in in the same range. The others are substantially below that. But bottom line, again, the Lompoc area compares very favorably with, with what we're looking at in this area. Now, in the per capita income, that second figure, it's easy to compare, confuse that with a dollar figure. That's number of households. So going from left to right, the first is per capita in dollars. The second is number of incomes, or number of households. The third figure going left to right is the disposable income of the marketplace. And then the total retail sales just gives us an indication of the activity in those markets. Now, where you see one figure for three communities stacked up, that's the combination of the three. So Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, and Lompoc are combined into one statistic in this particular research. San Luis Obispo, Tascatero, Paso Robos are combined. And then we look at Bakersfield, Ventura, in California. Going to Iowa, we look at the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City. Eddyville Raceway is, is basically near Des Moines. And then Midstate Dragway is the one we mentioned earlier that is in the Peoria-Peekin area. And it's near, the other ma, major in their categories is Bloomington-Normal and Springfield, Illinois. So again, we're not talking about the Los Angeles-Chicago, New Yorks of the world. This is an aerial view of the, the Lompoc Airport. And I told the guys I didn't need the laser. I find myself ready to use it here already. This area in here, this lower shelf, that is a different, lower level than the, the runway of the airport. So it's not useful to tie into the, the airport's aeronautical activities. But the, the location of it and the way the plan is worked out makes it a viable location for the motorsports facility. So it's a, combining the best of both worlds in, in utilization of city property, we feel. The top view, looking down on it as an aerial view, shows the location, the, the airport. Here again, the runways and everything. This is just the top view of what we looked at before. I won't dwell on that too long, because it's actually a repeat. And here we, I might mention, with, with the budget we're talking about, we're not talking about building the tower like that, but that is representative of what is in some of the facilities. There would be a control tower of that nature. And this is just a listing of the type of things that would be built here, the kind of operations, the different sizes of facilities, the concessions, and the car club activity. Again, wrapping up with the fact that this is scheduled to be a nationally sanctioned facility with the International Hot Rod Association. The plan is that this, this will not happen all at one time. That the, the first phase will get everything operational, and then some of the amenities will be built as time and earnings permit, so that it will not, these things don't happen overnight. But, but there is a plan in place to do it in an orderly fashion. And this is further look at, at the extra steps that would be taken in that operation. Basically, it's a lot quicker to get the dirt facilities going. Where the paving is required, it takes a little longer, would go into a second year. And then some of the further amenities would go into a, a third year. And this, again, takes the, lists some of those activities and what would be involved in them. And if the permanent restroom and concession facilities are the type of things that we want to build into this to make it at, the, the kind of place where families like to go, make it comfortable for everybody. Lighting and sound are, obviously, need those things, but they would be done in, in a manner that the lighting is controlled to the operational area. The sound systems are devised so that they provide the next, necessary announcements within the facility, but are geared to contain the sound on the facility the best way possible. And I make that point because I've reviewed facilities where there was a question of controlling the sound. And when we measured everything, we found out that they were emitting more sound outside the facility than they were within it. And that's just a matter of poor planning. That, the type of planning to keep that controlled properly is a part of this procedure. Now, on geographic proximities, the, obviously, you know where Lompoc is, there with the star. The other stars are facilities around the state of California, so that there's nothing. Bakersfield is the closest facility. And as we look at the rest of the nation, we can see where the, these facilities of this type coexist quite comfortably with other facilities nearby. They each develop their own following, particularly if they're wise enough to cooperate on scheduling. It works out very well. And to look at that, this, this is a listing of those various stars that are on the California map. To start with, we, we took a look at Iowa. We all think of Iowa as the tall corn country. It also has the most racetracks of any state in the nation. Most of them are small dirt track ovals. That's what's the most popular in Iowa. But they do have five dragways around the, the state. And the, the review that we've done in, in terms of, of looking at the financial results and so forth and the viability, measures two of those. And we've also looked, and this is a listing of the specific tracks and the communities where they're located. As you see, none of those are big metropolitan areas. As we go a little bit further east in Illinois, we can see the, there are five tracks located there also. In Northern Illinois, it's in, oops, that wasn't supposed to happen. That was supposed to be the laser. In Northern Illinois, we've got, the laser is not cooperating. Oh, there it is. Okay, right there, we have Cordova Dragway Park. We have Byron Dragway there. If you go into Wisconsin, there's Union Grove, Wisconsin. Then there's a national event track here that isn't on the same schedule. But these three tracks, they're all about 60 to 75 miles apart. They all operate every week, and they all do so successfully, both financially and number of contestants. They develop their own following. So we do know that the, those situations are viable. I wonder if we've got low batteries here. Okay, that's a listing of the, when I push the button real hard, it moves. I don't know if that's a low battery sign or not, but we'll just push the button harder. This is a, a listing of the facilities in Illinois. And in Indiana, think of that as the home of the Indianapolis 500. But it's also, we've got about nine drag strips in, in the state of Indiana. Only one of them is close to Indianapolis, and it's, it doesn't operate on the same weekly schedule as the others. So there, again, we've got the viability of, of facilities that have competing facilities nearby. They're in smaller parts of the market, and they still work. Here again, just looking at how does a community of 43,000 on, like Lompoc, look at success with a motorsports facility of this nature? That's a list of the particular facilities. And the, the one in the middle, Indianapolis Raceway Park, is the only one that's in a major metropolitan area. Now, one more state that we'll look at, just as, as we measure these comparables, is North Carolina. We always think of that as NASCAR territory. Why, why would anybody go drag racing in the state of, of North Carolina? That's, that's where the NASCAR races are at. Actually, there are 19 tracks. 18 of the 19 are eighth mile, like what is planned for Lompoc. There's one quarter-mile track. As you can see, they're extremely close together, and all of them operate quite successfully. It's, it's just a matter of allowing development of the, the business, the program at the tracks. And of course, when they're that close, it, it does benefit substantially if they cooperate just a bit on scheduling and don't all try to do the same thing on the same day. And that is a listing of the, the tracks that are on that map. I won't try to take the time to read through these. I didn't want to go through this like some people do with a PowerPoint, where they read you chapter and verse of everything that's on the screen. Otherwise, we'd be here until about Friday, and I don't think we want to do that. Now, as we went through the booklet, on each of the categories, for the drag strip, for the off-road, and for the karts, we did number of events per year, a per-event average. And then we did predictable growth rate for the five years and put them together in a forecast that this summarizes the one year for one type of activity. And then we put all of them together so we could get a look at the annual revenue that it might generate to see that, yes, there is a need for fundraising to build the facility, but there's enough activity and entry fees and things of that nature to make it very viable, to be sustainable for long-term maintenance of the facility and, and carrying on the operation. This is an idea, this is, is looking from the H Street side, at that lower shelf down toward the Dry River bed, at what it might look like with the facility in place. And the conclusion, closing remark, is, it's obvious from what you've heard already that there's a lot of work been put into it. I'd say the stack of, of petitions signed here, something in excess of 10,000, is a strong indicator of community support. And the, the attendance tonight, to the point that you had to open up the walls, is, shows that there's people that are, are interested enough to come out and see what happens. We've touched already on the positive benefits to the community. And the, the fact that this is a part of the, the Recreation Pool Foundation, where people get behind it, to contribute toward this, they know they're building a city facility that's going to be here for the future, not something that's going to benefit an individual or a corporation. And of course, the, the need tonight is for the city to approve, moving forward through the necessary steps to, as the sign says, build a better Lompoc. And in closing, and Carl's already touched on this group that's put all this work into it, but I, I didn't want to, want additional time, list the folks that have taken the, the time to go to all these committee meetings, to do the extra work, to make this a reality. And I, my hat's off to them for the work that they've done, as well as to the folks that aren't on the committee but have come out tonight to support this. So with that, I said I would try to expedite this process, so I won't talk any longer. But I, I would be happy to answer any questions if you've got them.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the very exhausting, not exhausting, but complete report. It's very, very interesting. One of the slides you showed up there, it was the different phases. It was getting the lease approval. The next one was financing. Where is, this is going to be an expensive project. Where do you see the financing coming from?
Well, we, we hope to get it from the community. I mean, if people step up and, and make donations, lend the volunteer work in, in the creation of it. And some of the businesses in here at town have promised materials at cost or free. We've been given some materials already. I think with the community pulling together, we can actually do it. We're definitely going to have to do some serious fundraising, approaching large businesses, foundations, you know, philanthropic organizations for money. But we anticipate that. That's, the main point is that we have to have approval in order to start doing that. No one's going to lend you money if you don't have anything in place. So we have nothing until we get city council approval. But I, I have had some organizations say that they would make donations to us, sizable donations, once we get approval.
Because this isn't something you're going to finance on hot dog sales and $10 donations. I mean, I don't know what you've estimated. I'm looking at this, and this has to be a multimillion-dollar project.
We figure a couple million, yes.
Yeah, okay, and you think...
That's the long, that's upon completion, but like...
I, I agree, yeah.
Right. We're planning a phased mode of building it. We can only do it a little at a time, and as the money comes available, we, we improve it, so.
Okay. And at this point, and in the foreseeable future, you're not asking for the city financing?
No, 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 sir.
You don't, there's nothing in your plans for that?
All we're asking for at this point in time is a long-term, renewable lease on the property and the opportunity to, to make this happen. It's, it's an opportunity that we're looking for. The city, I mean, we're not asking for money. I think the, we can do it from the community.
Probably more questions later, then. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Ms. Gallivan, if you could just clearly state what council is being requested to do this evening?
Certainly. We're asking if council would like to have us proceed and work with the applicant on preparation of an analysis to identify issues relative to the development of the proposed project. And if you want us to develop an MOU that would give a timeline and benchmarks moving forward through all of the, the development review process.
Thank you. Mr. Creel, when we discussed this in a meeting that we had together, you did mention that you went to the Airport Commission with this proposal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And can you give some feedback on what was said at that commission?
Well, at the, at the meeting that I had with the Airport Commission, there was four of the members of the commission and the airport administrator. And everyone seemed to be in agreement that it was a positive project for the airport because we would be generating money for the airport, which would improve their facilities. I mean, they have long-term plans that they want to update the facility. I mean, they have hopes for a restaurant, a tower, and whatever funds we generate to them will help them. So they were receptive.
Great. And, you know, the one thing that I do have to say, I didn't see here that I was a little bit concerned about was at least a tentative construction budget. Is there any idea what those numbers may be as far as construction is concerned?
In the long term or the total completion cost? I think Ron might be the best idea to, my guess is a couple million when it's all said and done.
Okay. I mean, a little bit more detail than that, I think, as we move forward, understanding, you know, if this is a feasible project. You know, and I understand when we say financing from the city, you know, they're not asking for financing, but this is public property. So in a sense, you know, there is a dollar value to that. It's the taxpayers' property and they're clearly telling us what they want. So I appreciate everybody in attendance this evening. I do have a few additional questions. You know, in your point of view, what is the responsibility of the city, financial or otherwise? Is it really just going to be working with the organization to take these through the steps? Take us through the steps.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
What do you feel the role of the city will be, financial or otherwise?
I don't think there should be any financial. We're not asking for money. We just want the opportunity. We want to be self-sufficient. It would be, in reality, a public-private partnership. What we would be doing is taking city property and taking it from a weed-infested, unused piece of property, making it an asset to the city.
Understood. So there are a few concerns I have and I was curious if you could speak to them. The first of those is parking. So as it's, as the, as it is proposed currently with the layout, how many visitor cars, not including the folks who would actually be racing and such, but just the visitors, how many, how much room do you feel this would accommodate at this point?
You mean individual cars? I don't know. At this point, I can't say. It's going to naturally depend upon response. It's going to grow slowly. Initially, we're just going to have off-road and motorcycles. But the parking, the parking that we plan on accommodating will be in the, if you see the model, it has a large pit area. We can accommodate parking there. And in surrounding areas, there's just similar to what the casino's doing at Walmart, contract parking. We anticipate we could do some of that also.
Okay. The other concern I had, and I voiced this to you previously, was the noise concern. So there was a quote in the, in the project packet here that says, "Anything with wheels will be welcome to race." So is that technically true or is that actually not technically true? Because right, with an eighth mile, I'm just making this clear for the questions that I've received. I want the public to know. I've received many emails with some questions and this was one of them, noise being a concern.
Well, in reality, an eighth mile track is not suitable for some of the big dragsters that the NHRA or some of the major events would have. So we wouldn't have that large of a vehicle. We also wouldn't have the speeds that they attain. So really, this track is geared towards the average sportsman racer, which is a person that just has a door slammer type car. It's just a car that's set up for racing. It's not a dragster per se.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions regarding a follow-up to Councilmember Costa, and that is, what do you see the role of the city? And what I mean by that is, reading the staff report, it will be clear that you will need to be contacting state and federal agencies for studies. Some of those studies will be traffic, environmental studies and so forth, dealing with the government, dealing with state and federal agencies, and let's leave the city aside for a minute. Who do you see that is going to do that? Is that going to be part of the city's role in this joint, you know, partnership? I'm a little confused as to what, who has what roles. And if that could be explained, it would be easier, at least for me, to make a decision as to really, what are you asking of the city to do? I do understand that you're not asking for money. However, there is a long list, unfortunately, there is a long list of requirements that really has nothing to do with the city of Lompoc. It has to do with the state and the federal. And as any government, it's going to be long, tedious, expensive, it's going to take time and a lot of staff time, people's time. And I'd like to know where, who is going to do that?
Well, quite honestly, we don't have the expertise. We haven't dealt with these agencies before. So what we're looking for is for this, the staff who has had dealings with these agencies to be assisting us. Naturally, there's going to be staff time involved, but they have the expertise. I mean, the city of Lompoc has plenty of intelligent, professional people that worked with these agencies before. And we, as a private group, naturally have not the expertise at this point. But we're, you know, we need assistance from the city. That's what we're looking for. And naturally, we will, we anticipate paying the study costs and the staff costs if need be. So that's what we're looking for, is really, it's a partnership. We want to do something for the community. We're asking for the city's help. And it's something, I think, most of these issues that are on that laundry list, I question whether, you know, they're listed, but I question whether they really have to be addressed in the form of a, an actual study. I don't know. But I'm curious about that. I ask myself, you know, does that really have to be done? And if so, why? And then how do we go about it? And that's what I'm looking for, is the ability for the city to help us mitigate and work through these issues.
So I have a question for Ms. Gallivan regarding the amount of time that the staff will have to work on this project to facilitate and help with the expertise that the staff has. What is your estimate on time and approximately?
The estimating of time is a little more challenging without the project being submitted for development review. However, to address the resources that we do have, we are able to work with a consultant if the project is able to be built. So if internally, we need to bring in additional resources, as long as we have a funding source for that, then we could address it in that manner.
And that is the issue. If we're going to have to pay for consultants, if we're going, because the expertise may not be in-house, or, you know, it seems that we're always hiring consultants, I'd like to know where the funding would be. And perhaps in the MOU, it will have to explicitly be said, you know, it is, it is the responsibility of the foundation to pay for, you know, any additional staff time or whatever. I mean, that's, those are the details that I think they need to be spelled out before we can find out really what the liability is from the financial point of view for the city, which is what we all have questions of, is the financial aspect of it. The next question is regarding, and believe me, I don't know much about motor, so I'm very ignorant on this, so you'll have to educate me. Do you need public safety to be in place while there is an event going on? Is there a need for that?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Meaning fire, ambulance?
Oh, no, no. We would, we would be responsible for providing that. At most events like that, you either pay for a safety vehicle, you know, with the EMTs to be on hand for the entire event, or else they're on standby.
So you would be paying for a contract?
Yes. We would, that would be our dime, for sure.
That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Lingle.
I'm going to chop liver. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He likes me better.
I guess.
Just a follow-up on Councilmember Costa and Councilmember Martner's. The public property, that is a concern of many people, but you are requesting to lease the property. So it'll be, it's a vacant piece of property. We're not getting anything right now, so we're looking at a lease. So potential income to the city right there. And I'm assuming if your projections go through, there will be significant revenue to the city generated from this. So I think that can be addressed on the use of public land. As a, and it is a concern of everyone's, and Councilmember Martner did bring it up, the cost to the city. So it's been made pretty clear so far that you're taking care of the costs. We're just going to possibly provide some of the expertise, but that will be paid for by your group as well.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you've obviously discriminated against me and the mud boggers. I didn't see a mud bog pit anywhere in this, but
Sorry. We can only do so much with a small piece of property.
Yeah, take your go-karts. I got a couple of things I wanted to say. I think it'd be pretty easy to go through the staff liaison with the public here and the review of the MOU. After that, it's going to be at the DRB and that would be a nice time to come back because that way I think you would be a lot more prepared to answer some of these questions. We wouldn't tie up a lot of staff time getting to that point, I don't think, to the developmental review board.
Once we have the project plan and the site plan to the dimensions, then we can start routing things.
Right. So at this point, I mean, that was all that would be, that's all we would need. And then we could get, re-review this for the actual amount of time that would be used on it.
And a better estimate
Give the committee a good idea of what they're going to need and what you are going to, you know, the time it'll take for you. I like the business plan. It made really great sense to me and I'm glad that you guys did put the money out to do it. I mean, I spent a lot of time looking over it, you know, how sometimes graphs can always lie, but I really feel that this one was pretty much on board. One thing I got to say is, you know, standby, when you're in government, it's very frustrating and the frustration will get very high and it's going to be slower than you can ever believe, but you know you will have a lot more work to do. The FEMA part kind of concerns me with the river there, but I think we'll work through that. In my eyes, I really tell you, I think that this is a perfect project of tell us how we can and not why we can't. I'd really like to see this move forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you guys, we have a little rule that you can't clap. But when we get all done, I'll let everybody clap for everybody that presented.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I really wasn't through with the presentation at this point. There was, there was, we have a gentleman from the International Hot Rod Association.
I asked you if you were going to let him talk.
Yeah, he came all the way from Texas. I'd like to have his input. He's, he has a few words to say about what he thinks the viability of the project is. And this is Mr. Phil Gingrich from the International Hot Rod Association.
Remember what I told you. We'll get it all at once at the end.
Mayor, Mayor, council members. I am the Director of Track Development for the International Hot Rod Association. We are owned by Feld Entertainment. They are the world's largest family ticket seller. Some of the venues that you may recognize that they own is Disney on Ice, Barnum and Bailey Circus, the monster trucks that you see on TV, if you ever see them, on the Speed Channel, and also motocross, motorcycle racing that you see on TV, as well as our organization, We are committed to this project. I've spent a great deal of time working with Carl and his group. We are, as far as the project, we will sanction it as long as it's built to our specifications and there will be a final inspection, which I will do at the end, that we are very much behind it. We offer, along with that part of it, we offer three major insurance companies that they can go through to get the liability insurance that is required by our organization. K&amp;K Insurance, Wells Fargo, and WSIB out of Michigan Motorsports. Today, there are only two sanctioning bodies in drag racing. There's really only, well, there's been three, but there's just two of us left, the NHRA and our organization. We've been around since 1970 and our main emphasis is on the sportsman racer, whereas the other organization, theirs, is mainly on the professional side. We offer several programs to the tracks that can benefit them not only monetarily and to be successful, but also to the racers that they can earn some extra money, prizes, and have a safe place to race. I can tell you, I've been doing this for 10 years, I can tell you that over those 10 years, at this point in time, about 70% of the proposed tracks are being built. Once they get past this phase to the next phase of the council's approval, that figure goes up to 90%. And the other 10% usually is due to lost interest, as you mentioned. Takes time to get these things built, really does. And lost interest or lack of funding. So 90% is a solid number as far as that is concerned. And again, as was mentioned before, this project is really dependent upon the community. And I'd like to briefly give you an example of that. Five years ago, I was given, I was, received a phone call from a track up in Malta, Montana. I've never heard of it. And it's, I looked at the map and it's 50 miles south of the Canadian border. And this call was in February and I'm from Dallas, Texas, and I didn't really want to go, but I did. And I made a presentation to them, what we could do for them and help them. And I flew into Billings and it took me three hours going through the mountains to get there. And got there and the town itself had a total population of 1,000 people, 1,000. The closest town of any size was 30 miles away, with Billings being three hours away, the largest city. I guess Butte's the largest, but it's even further away. So we went out to the site owned by the city and it was an abandoned airport, nothing but old asphalt and weeds. And I can tell you today, five years later, it is one of the most successful tracks in the country, probably one of the most beautiful eighth mile tracks in the country. At the end of the first year, and this was all done through volunteer labor and people contributing material and the labor to build it, fundraisers, just anything and everything. They just did an unbelievable job. And at the end of the first year, and they only run eight races a year because of the weather restraints. So out of eight races a year, they put a huge amount of money in the bank and have done so every year since. This past year, they stepped up and put in a state-of-the-art timing system, paid cash for $65,000 to have installed and still had money left over. So it, and it, it just speaks to the community effort and only 1,000 people. It's, it's an unbelievable job. And I've got other stories like that too, but I won't go into that. Lastly, before I came tonight, I went through our roster of tracks, which we have 97 now that we sanctioned. And 12 of those are situations very similar to this, where it's city or county-owned property and the tracks leased from them. And it ranges from Alaska to Puerto Rico to Aruba, New Zealand, and then in the States. But right now, we've got 12 of those tracks. So it is a very viable, viable program. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to ask. If I don't have the answers, I'll get them for you or somebody here might be able to answer.
Okay. Anyone have a question right now?
Do you guys do grants?
No, we don't. We, we're not in the racetrack. We're a sanctioning body only, yeah. We're a sanctioning body only, yeah. I get that question quite frequently. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phil. Anyway, in conclusions, I just want to say that in regards to the parking question, was it you, Ashley, or was it-- okay. Mr. Skyler filled me in that there is an industry standard that when they-- at sporting events like this, they figure that there's two and a quarter people per car, and the-- I guess that quarter person's a small child, but-- but the report should show small events, medium events, and that's all we're planning on. So the quantities should be directly applicable to the numbers in the report, so that should help you with trying to figure that out. Anyway, in continuing, I just wanted to say that we know this project has some issues, but we also know that it has a lot of benefits for the community. It's got overwhelming community support, and it is just a win-win for the community. There's too many positive things for it to be considered a negative. I mean, it can be an economic engine for the community as well as a recreational venue. So I wanted to say a few things about the display we have over there. They're pretty well thought out. The model was done by Mr. John Eckert that works for Sunset Chevrolet, did an excellent job on it. It's a pretty fair representation of what we're looking at. The illustration was done by a professional architectural illustrator, and the blow-up was-- the overview was done by Graphic Systems, and it's-- it gives a pretty fair representation of what we're looking at, though it's-- you can't rely on it as being totally accurate. It's just a representation. We haven't had the opportunity to survey the property or anything, so any comments in the staff report referring to location of things, I don't think are applicable at this point. But in concluding, I just want to say that this is a project for the community, and the community wants this. If we can get this moving forward, like I said before, with just the help of City Hall to get through the hurdles, it can benefit the community. So that being said, I want to take this opportunity now to ask the council on behalf of the capiti and our supporters here, the city of Lompoke, to give us a positive approval vote on this project so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, is there going to be an opportunity for public comment? I think some people want to--
Oh, yeah, we're going to get there.
Okay.
I've got a little information to share first, though, that I think everybody needs to know. First, is Ed Ross out there? Okay. Well, we owe Ed a debt on this project for trying so many years ago to bring a strip to Lompoke in the county, which was not successful. And I know some of the rest of you out there, whose names I don't remember, were involved. In 2008, when the rather long-name foundation was started, we began with four projects at our very first meeting. It was a dog park, a BMX park, a drag strip, and a motocross motorcycle park. And 130 people showed up and said, hey, we want to do this. And 30 people put up their money where their mouth was, and that enabled us to pay the costs of starting the foundation, and thanks to Al Walker and friends and everyone else who put in time and helped us do the paperwork so that we could become a foundation. Back in 2008, the council got on board with the Barkin Park, and that was created, and obviously, on a scale, this is a lot bigger. And the planning commissioner, the Parks and Rec Commission, has approved the BMX Bicycle Park, and that's moving forward. And now we're down to the part of it that is really why I got involved in this. There's a car out front, and that belonged to John Paul Bundy. He lost his life in that crash. When I went to that crash, he was laying on the side of the road dead. I see him there when I drive by that site. And as I was talking to different people out here, different people remember others that died. My service manager's son of years ago, John Paul was your high school classmate. And from my standpoint, I don't want to see any more kids die if we can stop that. So that's my deep-in-the-heart motivation. The other motivation is Teresa's effort to bring economic vitality to the community, and I know what this can be for us. It can bring people here on weekends. It can cause money to be spent here in the hotels and the restaurants and the auto parts stores and Sunset Chevrolet and everywhere else, because if they go blow their car up, they're going to want to buy one that weekend, obviously. They're-- the project is really big. It is. There are a lot of steps in it. And the first step was getting a bunch of people together that wanted to be involved. And this is our third try at it, and thank you for everyone that's here and wanting to be involved, and everybody that's helped. The next step was going down to the airport and talking to Skydive Santa Barbara and going, hey, you want to get in on this with us? And then getting him on the committee and going to the Airport Commission and getting that done. And then all those-- I don't even know how many meetings you guys went through for the preliminary design, and then the fundraising to get to the business consultant, and then I wouldn't call it a final design, but the interim design that was enough to get the business plan going forward. And way back along this path, I had a nice chat with the lady at the FAA, whose name I still can't remember, even after I talked to her today, because before we even went down this road, we had to talk to her and go, well, you know, this is kind of airport property. What do you guys think about it? And what she said to me back then was, well, you need to go see the Airport Commission It is excess property that's not in the current airport plan, and you need to prove that it can provide a financial or other benefit to the airport before we'll consider it. And so obviously, the benefit is the amount of money that this would generate. And just to keep it in mind, once this whatever value facility is built, 1 million, 2 million, 20 million, you guys keep going, it becomes the property of the city of Lompoke. It's, you know, it's leased and operated by the committee, but it's a city facility. We, the city of Lompoke, will get this facility just as we have baseball fields and dog parks and all the other things that have been built by various groups in the city. Today, just to make sure that nothing had changed, I called the nice FAA lady again, and we talked at much greater length about exactly what we needed to do in the next step. And there's a form that needs to be filled out, and you have to get a letter from the city and all those things. And that's the next step that needs to happen before we go any further down life's road, because now we've got a document that says it's financially viable. Now we need to start getting the approvals, and the approval that we want to get first is the easiest one that doesn't cost any money. It takes four to six weeks to get an approval from the FAA for the project on the property. And they don't even have the property on the airport plan, so they're pretty amenable to it. The next one on the list is a traffic and circulation plan, and the decision that will have to be made there is whether the principal exit will be on George Miller Drive, which would require an action with Caltrans, or if it were going to be, as currently proposed, on V Street, wherein it would be a decision by the city. Additionally, you all in the committee need to decide approximately how many parking spaces are going to be on-site, and where the off-site parking would be and what your method of transportation would be, back and forth, presumably a bus, which would affect the need for a traffic study. Councilmember Lingle and I were fortunate when we went to Washington, D.C. about a month ago, that Congressman Gallagher was able to-- I'm sorry, do you have a question? To get us in for a meeting with FEMA. As many of you know, this is-- this particular site is in the floodplain. And although a facility could operate in the floodplain, the-- what you could do needs to be portable and is more problematic. And Bob, you can share on this. I think my takeaway from it in the discussions we had with FEMA was that because of things that have changed in the river, and I'm not going to give you the two-hour version, but you can stay after if you want, FEMA would be willing to consider changing the floodplain. And this is important not just for you guys. It's important because it would allow us to add 150 feet to the end of the airport runway, which would get us to the magic 5,000 feet, which would get us more air traffic, which would sell more fuel, which would make the airport more profitable. It would allow us to put restrooms in at the soccer fields at Riverbed Park. It would allow us to replace facilities at River Park. And I think there were 11 things on the list when we, you and I, got done talking about it, but I don't know what they all were. And then there's the biological study, and there's no way around that. We're going to do those studies that we need to do, and we're going to meet the California Environmental Quality Act. And each of those fall in order. So the next one is a clearance from the FAA, and then there's a clearance from Fish and Game, and then there's the beginning of the biological and impact studies. And just so everybody out there gets it, we've got to raise money to do these things if we decide to do it tonight. So this is not the first step or the last step, but one in between. Cultural resources, environmental reviews, all those steps have to be gone through. But I still feel confident that those steps can be moved through. Are there any other questions at this time, or shall we go to public communication?
I have a question.
Yeah. Councilmember Martner.
I have a question for the legal counsel. That is, since this facility, once it gets built, it will be operated by the foundation, but nevertheless, it still would be property of the city of Lompoke. And what does that mean regarding liability?
There certainly is potential for the city to be liable. I would expect any agreement that you have with the foundation for operating the facility is going to involve the foundation obtaining insurance and making the city an additional insured. The fellow from the IHRA who spoke said that there is insurance available for these kinds of tracks, and I assume that one of the objectives is to make it available at a reasonable cost.
So the question is, would it be part of the MOU to specifically state that the city will not be liable, and that the foundation or whoever the agency is that is operating it will have to carry the burden of liability in case of accidents?
That could be included in the MOU to make that clear from the beginning. And of course, in addition to insurance provisions, there would also be an indemnity provision in the event that insurance, for whatever reason, were not sufficient.
Okay, great. So my next question is to the council and the staff. It is being asked of us today to provide direction to the staff to proceed with the preparation of an analysis to identify issues relative to the development of this proposed project. So are we going to give direction tonight regarding what we want to see in the MOU or no? Or is that going to come later? So I want to see what is the next step from the city's side as far as what should go in the MOU, and when would the council vote on what should go in the MOU? Would you please address that?
Certainly. Yes, we can go ahead and come back to council with a draft of the MOU and the timelines. So that-- what goes into the MOU, if there's some certain things you want to acknowledge today, but we can come back to you further with that information.
Well, I already said one of them that I would very much like to see in the MOU is the issue of liability, because that potentially can cost the city a lot of money. I don't know if there is other, you know, along the conversation as we go here, there might be other things that will come up regarding what should go into the MOU if we decide to vote that way.
It's okay, Carl.
Well, the issue of liability, I'm not sure I understand. I mean, that's the purpose of insurance, and if we list the city as the secondary insured in whatever amount is necessary to limit that liability, I think that's the key to it. Am I correct?
Let's get the experts standing behind you, right behind you.
The insurance is part-- the first part of us being able to sanction the facility. We require a minimum of a million-dollar liability. And as you had mentioned earlier, the city would be named as additional insured, as well as Feld Entertainment. And then, of course, the principal would be the committee or whoever's managing the track. So that is covered. I mean, that's just a must before I can even sanction a track. They have to go through one of our three carriers and have that minimum amount of coverage. Does that answer your question? Okay. No cost to the city.
All right. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Also, in regards to the MOU, one of the statements that I wanted to make, you know, I know that we are looking at this as a public-private partnership, which I think can be very successful. But I think what needs to be spelled out in the MOU very precisely is, what is the full extent of the public part of that partnership, looking down the road especially and anticipating possible difficulties or challenges? So I would ask staff to be tasked with really being able to define what role the public will play in this partnership. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go for oral communication. You've been sitting out there. Come on down. Remember to say your name. We will after.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Nicholas Gonzalez, and I speak today as a resident. I appreciate your fiduciary duty that you're trying to meet here, but I am very much confused. And the reason is that today you have a group that's asking for an MOU that costs the city nothing at this point in time. Yet, on the consent calendar today, in a letter to the grand jury, we have a response for future obligations of successor agency of the RDA, which is the city of Lompoke, of $43.8 million. I would implore everybody here to stay and to see how you respond to that letter. That being said, these obligations that are due with the RDA could possibly result in financial responsibilities for the city. The city absolutely needs projects like this that can bring in additional revenues to the city. If revenues come in, restaurant properties get more valuable, hotel properties get more valuable, other properties get more valuable, and the tax increment increases thereby decreasing the potential liability for the other obligations that you have. This is not really an option. This is a necessity. And I implore you to facilitate in any way you can, as long as there's no cost to the city, to make this successful, because it will spill into other areas of the city that are much more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mary Lynn, councilmembers, my name is Don Palmerville, and I'm speaking actually with about three hats on today. One is a father who had kids who did drag race, and I used to go to Formosa Racetrack with my kids. We spent a lot of weekends there, and we spent a lot of money in Bakersfield and hotels and restaurants. We need to start a project like this right now, because we have the future generation coming up right now. And with-- as a father with three children, my kids had really not a whole lot to do, except to get harassed by the police for skateboarding in the parks, skateboarding in the streets. And then my one child was a drag racer, and he got hauled in a few times. And, you know, I wish we had a project like this for them there. They also got hauled out of the riverbed quite often, too, riding their quads and their motorcycles. It would be real nice for our children to have a place to ride that's legal, clean, and have people that are watching them. and have people that are watching them. The other reason why I'm here is because I'm on the Economic Development Committee right now, and this is one of the projects that we are really looking forward to, to help bring income into this community. Nobody's really mentioned about how much money's gonna be bringing in by the hotels, the restaurants, the parts stores. That's gonna be huge. Not only the money generated by the track itself, but what we're gonna bring in to the existing businesses right now. The other thing is, too, and I don't, I'm not allowed to say a whole lot about it, but within the Economic Development Board, we are working on something to bring in additional revenue to the city. That's not gonna cost the city anything, it's gonna be controlled by a group, and they're allowed to spend that money for anything that will bring people into the community to stay in hotels. So we're gonna have additional revenue, and that's projected to be between $350,000 and $500,000 a year. So that's money that we could possibly use towards this project to help them get off the ground. Anyway, thank you for your time, and I would like to see a yes vote.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, George Bedford, city of Longpoke Advocate. A couple things. We keep talking about it's not gonna cost the city anything, it's not gonna cost the city anything. I just think about all the things the city has right now that basically are underutilized. The airport's one. That's owned by the city. The swimming pool, that's another one owned by the city. And a senior center, one of my favorites, also owned by the city. So when you say, and all of those things are a benefit to living in the city of Longpoke. And I, and I, I just think this is a huge benefit also for living in the city of Longpoke. We get to have people come in on the weekends and enjoy themselves down at the, down by the airport. They buy things at the restaurants, they buy motel rooms, who employ Longpoke City residents. And then, at the end of the weekend, the good thing is, they're all gone again. So they came, they had fun, and they left. Kinda like my GM rep. We call them pigeons. They come in, eat their food, do what they do, and leave. But this is, this is a huge benefit, and it's, and it's, it's kind of a, like the stars up there on the map. I don't think anybody in this room even realizes what the potential of this drag strip is. Now, I drag raced for years and years and years. I started as a young kid in '61. I had a stint in the Marine Corps where I couldn't do it. I had a stint with the family I couldn't do it. But when I got to the point where I could do it, I did it. I did it for years and years and years. And I was just noticing the demographic stopped at '64. Well, I'm '69, but I'm even thinking about getting back into it again, so. But, but the thing about a multi-use facility, we keep talking about the drag racing aspect of it. When you put those bleachers down there, and you wanna have a venue where you could have a concert, just a community concert, the facility's gonna have asphalt. I know everybody hates asphalt, I particularly love it, but asphalt, concrete, it's gonna have an area where everybody can use it. It's not just about the dirt bikes, it's not about the go-karts, it's not about the drag racers. It's also about entertainment. You can have lots of venues down there. The parking issue will take care of itself. I realized that was gonna be part of it, and we, and we talked about the noise issue. All these racers are gonna have to have mufflers on their vehicles. I hated it, and I agree with you, you probably hate it, too. But the bottom line is, they all have to have mufflers. Dirk likes that particularly, so he may, he may have to abstain, because all of a sudden, now he may sell a muffler to a drag racer. But the bottom line is, there, there is noise criterias on all these tracks. And somebody was saying, well, you're probably gonna be able to, I was sitting at breakfast this morning with the people I hang around with, and one of them said, well, what about the noise? I said, well, okay, then why don't you shut down the high school football game? We can still all hear that. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be noise related to it, but the, the decibel levels are controlled by the IHRA. They control what the decibel level is of, of sportsman racers, and that's what they're called. The NHRA has the same thing. We had to put mufflers on my Camaro, on my Corvette, all of them had to have mufflers. So the noise issue is kind of off the table, but again, the city's saying, or you folks up there saying, well, it's not gonna cost us anything. Well, you know what? I'm hoping it is gonna cost you something, because the city needs to get on board and help make this happen. And yeah, there's people out there that will fund this track. So the track will get built, all you guys have to do is, is raise your hand up instead of putting your hands down. So that's all I have to say. It's a great project, I'm looking forward to making it happen.
Thanks, George. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Derek McLeish. I am a racer and a resident of Longpoke. And the reason I'm here is to tell you that California always led the United States in motorsports. We had the first drag strip here in Goleta. But the pressure of all the people that are in California and the major metropolitan areas have made all the drag strips close down. There are very few left, there's very little that can happen for our children to grow up and to become involved citizens that know what working with their hands is, know what racing and milestones can be in achievement. Hot rodding started in California because our military guys came back from World War II. We have a huge military presence here. And one of the things is, those guys have skill sets, there's lots of veterans who'd love to be involved in these kinds of things. We're looking at the kids, and we're looking at the people with skill sets that can help this country go forward. And I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Leslie, Longpoke, mayor, council. George and everybody kinda covered most of the things that I was gonna talk about, but there's other aspects to this, too, and it's teaching, and doing things, and being mentors to the kids and younger people in the town here and other towns. When I was younger, I started out in racing, and I kinda stayed with it all my life, you know, off and on. And the things it teaches you is teamwork, because you have to have a little team together when you start this thing. Takes you out economics. You have to know how to balance your money and do things, and I started that when I was probably about 14-years-old. It teaches you more math than you'll ever want in your whole life, because you have to know all this stuff. When I got into junior high school, my teacher wanted to know what the heck I'd been doing. So the math is really a good thing. Meet a lot of good people, you do a lot of good things together. It's just a good teacher. It's something that, once you get into it, you look forward to meeting new people, doing new things, and learning new stuff every day. With today's technology and electronics and everything going on, there's a lot to learn. It teaches you more than you'll ever believe. And I think this here is a good aspect to look at with the community and our surrounding communities. It's gonna be something that's gonna be available from Oxnard to wherever, because this is gonna be the only track around. It's gonna be a big asset to Longpoke for money, everybody knows that. It's gonna make us grow. It's gonna be something that's gonna be talked about a lot. And I think that it's a great thing for us to do, and you ought to take it into consideration and keep it there. It's gonna be something that'll be good for Longpoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron Smith. I have a little company called Smith's Alarms, and there are some of my customers out here. I'm, I do live in Napa, but I am a proud Chamber of Commerce member. And when I was talking to some people, they told me about this racetrack. I have four race cars. My daughter is nine-years-old, and we've been racing together, and she's pretty good. She hasn't beat me yet, but she's getting there. And when I talked to Carl about this, I said, look, are you guys for real? And he says, yes. And I said, I would like to offer my services. I am a C-10 California electrician, and I offered my services for free, because I believe in this project. I talked to a friend of mine, he was here a little while ago, Frank Westerfield, he's a local electrician also, he has offered his services for free also. So there's a lot of people that are offering their services for free, and, because we just believe in this project. We also have a guy that wants to give a lot of money, and, but I can't speak for him, but he does live here in, in Longpoke. But as I, as the race cars go, I'm excited. Like I said, I have four race cars of my own. They are little midget sprint cars. And I also race with a traveling team in Napa. And we put on shows, we had tin carts just at the Surrey Festival, and we put on a really nice show. And also in Ventura, we also put a nice show down there, too. And people come and watch us and stuff, it's really good family entertainment. My wife only comes when my, my daughter races, because she doesn't like watching me, because I go pretty fast. But the thing that I liked about this was, it was, he's told me this is a family thing, and I'm all for that, because me and my daughter have gotten so close just from the racing, and it feels so good to be closer to my daughter. Now, on a less happier note, I did lose two people to racing, and that's because they were on the streets. And if we can save one person, just one person, it would be worth it. Because I lost two people to street racing, and it wasn't pretty. And something that was very, very, very strange is, right after I told Carl about that, one of the two people that died, his favorite song just came on the radio, Whip It by the Gant Band or something, it was a really obscure song, and it came on. And I just had to have a smile on my face, because I know he's looking down, and he's telling me, go for it. And, because that could've saved my life. So like I said, if it can save one person's life, it's all worth it. And I guarantee you, some of these fathers out here are gonna get a lot closer to their sons and daughters, and, and like, and, and it's just a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Don Skyler. I'm here for, sponsoring for the Central Coast Street Rods. We got 30 members. We've been around for about 40 years now this year, and our club supports it. And as a business owner and a city resident, you know, we, I support it, and that's, like I say, thanks.
Okay, I see a bunch of you out there that don't come to council very often, so you need to get up and come on down and say your piece. Next.
Ned Ping, Longpoke. I'm a 34-year retired firefighter. I've seen the impact of street racing. Been firsthand on the calls where I've had to come in and pick it up. So the only thing I can say is, is that I would strongly urge council to consider this as a teaching opportunity for the entire city. We can not only teach our high school kids, we teach our parents, we teach the parents. All of us learn from this. This is such a golden opportunity for us. And to lighten that up just a little bit, there is one other adage that comes from drag racing. Win on Sunday, sell on Monday.
My name's Robert Schmedeke. Unbeknownst to many of you, I used to race. I've, I've raced at Lyons, I've raced at Irwindale, I even raced at Ascot Stadium at the mechanics races. I used to have a talent with SU carburetors and dune buggies. It was one of the things that has been left out here that is really, really important. This stuff is really fun. It's a kick in the head, folks. I gotta tell ya, it is more fun than you could possibly believe. I got into this, and one of the lessons I had to learn is miles per hour cost rectangular dollars, and stupid hurts. So I, I had to moderate myself in those days. Now, I'm a little older, I probably won't be racing, but I assure you, I will be buying tickets to these events. This is great fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of a dream come true for me. Many years, been waiting for a project of this type to come to the community. I'm a drag racer, I've been a car owner, crew chief. All three of my sons raced, drag raced. One of them started into professional asphalt track racing. They talk a lot of times about Longpoke needing a goal or something, you know? I'd like to put on, you know, make Longpoke your destination. How many of us this weekend are gonna go someplace else? Let's start talking about making us the, the destination. And how can we do that? By varying our community. When the local car club starter motorsports group started, I was approached, and I said, I'll do it on one thing. And that's that our motto is to drive the street and race the strip. I says, if you'll adopt that in our program, I will be on board 100%. One of the previous speakers talked about family. If you wanna see family in action, then go to a drag race. You pay one fee at the gate, and the place is yours. You wanna go over and talk to the drivers, you wanna go over and watch the crews tear the cars apart and put them back together, you wanna go and have dinner with them at night, that's all open to you. I can remember one of the first races we went to, had a pickup with a camper shell in the back, put the three boys on a mattress in the back, wife and I in front, went down, set up our campsite, went to the races all day, came back, cooked up dinner, slept the night there, went and visited with all the crews and stuff, and the next day, did it all over again. One of my sons just spoke to you tonight, very successful businessman in Longpoke. That's the result of family activities, good, healthy activities. Yes, we hauled them to Pomona, and we hauled them to Lyons Drag Strip, but the result is Where are we with, with racing? Is, is it viable? Is there any need for it? I get my papers apart here. Kinda miss, best, uh, here she, always when I was on the council, she liked to, to question my, some of my statements or comments when I have it, you know, she liked to, sometimes she called it straw votes, you know? You say, well, 20 people called me, or five people stopped me on the street or something. So in, in her memory, I bought the magazine, which I'm gonna read part of the article off of, so, best, here it is. There, there are many places where customers, and this, this come out of a business magazine, so I'm gonna have to adopt it here. There are many places where customers can pursue hobbies. The 2012 National Speedway Directory, which was shipped on May 15th, lists over 1,900 racing-related organizations that are active in the United States and Canada. No, we're not on the cutting edge here, we're not bringing a new product on the market or anything else. We're going to join almost 2,000 other people, organizations. These include more than 1,370 auto racing facilities, 330 sanctioned organizations, 65 related, racing-related museums, and 60 racing publications. There's just really no way to gauge this country's interest in auto racing, since studies we reported on Specialty Magazine over the past year given further evidence, the number of people who are watching, attending, and participating in racing and other fun automotive-oriented events. In some of its daily Profile America features produced over last year, the United States Census Bureau has reported that each year in the United States, nearly 19 million people attend car shows, nearly 19 million attend NASCAR races, and another 16.5 million go to other forms of auto racing. In this poll of Americans who follow at least one sport, Harris Interactive found that auto racing is America's fourth favorite sport. Anyway, I encourage the council to work with us, and let's bring this to Longpoke as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Ken Austin, the Longpoke Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and Longpoke resident.
Visitors Bureau, and Lompoc resident. Well, I'm not a racer, but I do enjoy going to races and watching races. And what more can I say than what's already been said here tonight? I urge you to support moving forward with this initiative. I think it's a good thing for Lompoc. There's no risk at this point for the city. So I'd like to see you vote in favor of this and move this project forward because I think you can only do good things for Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Brema. Mayor Lynn in City Council, excuse me. I'm here to talk tonight about the motor sports, I'm confused.
Motorsports Park, there you go.
And I'm a, I'm a small business owner here in Lompoc. My wife, son, and I own Napa Auto Parts now for thirty-three years. And my concern is the small businesses in town. I think if we drove around Lompoc, I think I could probably count a hundred empty storefronts right now. And perhaps that's something like this, bringing more people in from out of town will certainly help maybe fill some of those empty buildings. And it's depressing when you're in business because you see all these stores going out of business. And business hasn't been very, very good the past three or four years. And we need something to invigorate our town. And I think this would go a long way in doing something like that. So thank you very much for any consideration you give us in putting this thing in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Reardon. I'm the Secretary of the El Lompoc Valley Park, Spec and Pool Foundation, and also the leader of the Radio Control Car Racing Club, part of that foundation. And I'm here in support of the Motorsports Park. Of course, I have the right shirt on for it. I think this is an exciting thing for our town. You know, I've lived here since nineteen seventy-four, went to high school here. I've worked here around here my whole life. And you know, one thing that the kids have always said, and they still say it today, there's nothing to do in Lompoc. And all the high school kids will say that, you know. So this is something for us to do. One more thing to add some excitement to our community. You know, I'm excited about it. You know, the automotive, automotive hobby is huge in California. As I was mentioning before, the part of the heritage of California is auto racing. You know, started here and I think it's a great thing to put our community on the map even more than it already is. And I hope that you will all get behind this and supported it in these early stages. You know, I know there are issues with it, but none of them, to me as a layman, seem insurmountable. I believe we can do it if we all pull together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor and the City Council, my name's Tom Skyler. I was born and raised here in Lompoc. I'm also one of the people that says there's really nothing to do in Lompoc, so I would like to see this go through. I think it'd be a very profitable event for Lompoc and give the youth something to do at night and during the day. So I would like to see a yes vote on this. Thank you.
Ha ha, I'm a girl. Mayor and council members, I'd like to say, I appreciate my family speaking on their behalf, but I'd like to speak as both a mother, a daughter, grandmother, as my grandson just spoke, and a wife. My father raced in Lompoc, but I think he did Ocean Avenue. And I think people raced to Lompoc in the beginning of Lompoc. And I think racing is part of Lompoc. I think it's not the San Onofre River that runs through the city, it's racing that runs through the city. And I think it's something, even as a girl, I raced down from the mountains on my bicycle, down the Rodeo Grounds, down Seventh Street, and just raced, you know, just as fast as I could on my bicycle. But I think it's something here in Lompoc that we really do need, and I think, you know, it'll really bring a lot to Lompoc. And I appreciate a yes vote on this from this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ruth Skyler.
City Council, citizens of Lompoc. My name is Gilbert Navarro. I'm a resident. And I'd like to see this motorsports park go forward. And one of the reasons is, is I've talked with quite a few people in the past few years about the park coming in, and some of the reasons why. One of the major reasons is to get the younger people, or adults, or anybody else who races in our area, in our streets, off the streets. Just a week and a half ago, I had an incident that really made me really want to support this. I don't walk too well. So I was sitting out there in my front yard and I was weeding with a little hoe. And I live right in the corner of Fifth and East Cypress. And I, I heard this high revving from back beyond me. So I kind of turned a little bit and I saw this car just coming right off of East Ocean, and it lost control. He's kind of hooked to the left and then he hooked to the right. And now I'm fully turned, looking at it as it's coming. And the car just about, there was a trailer parked by my neighbor. The car's going right toward the trailer. And I'm seeing it like, oh, God, this has got to be a movie. This is not happening. And I'm thinking, this car is going to go airborne. So I'm still stuck. And he banks to the left, he goes around the trailer, and I guess he dropped the gear down. You can hear that the engine was just loud. And he starts hooking to the right. And now he's, I'm on my grass, and he's coming at me. And this is just a matter of seconds. And I can't move very well. But next thing I know, I'm going like this. And then the car stops. I'm on the lawn, laid out. And the, and the car stopped right next to me on the street. And it's two young kids. And I get up, and there's another vehicle with it. And they pull up and they're like, revving. And I get up and of course, I, those that know me know that I'm not going to say exactly what I said to them. But it was basically, you know, take that someplace else. Well, to me, the ultimate place would be for them to take it to a sanctioned racetrack. But when I did yell to them, I was really surprised. What they did was they, they locked the brake up and they revved the tires. And so I'm just, you know, this, having a racetrack might keep me alive a lot longer in my front yard. So, and, and the guys that were in the vehicle, too. You know, thank God, nobody was hurt. But that's my take on why I would like to see this motorsports park built in our city for our people that are, that want to race. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Economic Development Committee member Debbie McComb. What I'd like to do is encourage you to take this and move forward with it, to have such support from so many community members, to do something that would benefit our community and our children. It's something that as an Economic Development Committee member, we are thriving. We want to be the city of opportunity again. We have not been the city of opportunity for many years, and it's time again. With this project, with the possible addition of the Space Center, this will introduce families that will say, again, like the other gentleman was saying, our kids say there's nothing to do here. They leave here, they go to other communities, they drive at night. They can stay here, they can do things, people will come to us, we'll bring economic growth to businesses. We need, we need it. It's, it's a viable project and it, we need the enthusiasm back in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, my name's Brian Yezika. I've been a resident here for thirty-two years. I just felt compelled to say something. I've ridden dirt bikes, I've raced fast cars, and I've done all of that stuff illegally because there was never a facility to do it. I've actually learned to ride motorcycles on that exact property. I didn't know the track was really going to be there until tonight. But it used to be defraying crane, there used to be heavy equipment stationed down there all the time. And it was never an issue with any of that, with the airport noise levels. Nobody ever complained. It was mostly around the houses and stuff. I've been here long enough to see the mud bogs taken away, the dirt bikes taken away, everything taken away from us. And, you know, we always end up getting in trouble for doing it on our own. This is a safe thing. I know there's always regulations and liabilities and loopholes and stuff that, that stop us from doing it. But these guys have put in so much work, just good to see them, you know, let them move ahead one more step. Let's try it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Thomas, resident of the city and a member of the Economic Development Committee. I just wanted to speak to the fact that I sat there really disheartened at some aspects of the questioning when the gentleman was giving the presentation on his proposal, on how many city hours is this going to cost? And I'm thinking to myself, it should cost however many city hours it's required to bring this city an economically viable project. Our council prides itself on economic development being its top concern, yet we have workers who are here, they're forty hours. I mean, nobody's going to be expected to work over their forty hours, but within those forty hours, however many hours it takes is what we should be offering any business who wants to come in and bring an economically viable project to our city. We shouldn't be nickel and diming, saying that's going to cost you like a private sector would for billable hours. I think it just makes it a little harder to bring projects into the community and have people be jumping on board. I think it would be great for our community. I have two children and they would be all over it in a heartbeat. But it just kind of made me a little sad to hear how many city hours it was going to cost when it should cost however many it's going to cost until we can get some economically viable projects here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Hornberger. I'm pretty much born and raised in Lompoc. And when I was younger, a kid, it was perfectly legal to ride ATVs, motorcycles, in the riverbed. And it was enjoyable. Many people spent many hours down there all the time. Now, there's a lot of people riding down there, getting tickets from the police, and being chased by the county. And this will help get rid of a lot of that. It'll give them a legal place to ride and enjoy their sports what they enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Last chance. Going, going, gone. Back to council. Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a couple of comments regarding some of the public comment. One of the comments that actually really alerted me was that most of the drug strips have been shut down in California. I don't know whether the gentleman that spoke to that, he mentioned the one in Galida, whatever, that they have been shut down. So I would like to make sure that in this MOU, if it moves forward, that if the project gets shut down for whatever reason, there has to be some mediation that the city is not left with a bunch of asphalt and abandoned. I hope that that's not what's going to happen. But again, we have to think of what happens after if it gets shut down for whatever reason it may. Otherwise, we'll end up with some asphalt and we're going to have to pay for it. The couple of other comments, you know, this council has inherited what I would call some bad projects. And I give you some examples. The swimming pool, the community center, it's cost us a lot of money. Those were previous councils that made these decisions. I'm not saying that this will be one of those projects. But I do want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, that once, if this project gets approved with an MOU, we don't end up having to have the city spend more and more and more money in it, like it happened in the past. The swimming pool is a great project, but it's costing the city a lot of money. We need to make it better. The, the community center cost the city a lot of money. It has given a lot of people a lot of heartache. So as a council member, you need to think down the future. We, if we're going to approve a project, we want to make sure that it has a very high chance of success. This may be that. I'm not saying that it won't. But you have to understand that the responsibility falls here in making a decision that is actually fiscally very responsible. And there is nothing for free. And city hours of the staff, they're not for free. They cost money. And if they cost money, you want to spend it where you know you're going to succeed. You don't want to spend it where you don't know, where you know that you're not going to succeed. The, this council just approved the California Space Agency project that may happen, may not happen, but it's right in that vicinity. So we need to think about, are we going to be able to carry all of this through? I like to ask the council that question. Are we going to be able to pull through all of these projects? Maybe we will. It is definitely very clear that this community wants it. Absolutely, there is no question about it. I hear you, all of you here. I also hear that it will be beneficial for the community. And one of the benefits, the most biggest benefit that I see is that we're going to prevent and save lives from having this to go in places that are not properly cared. So I do understand that. And I put a lot of weight in that because it's a benefit to the community to do that. It's a benefit to the residents of this community. As far as the economic development, I see it more as a community thing. You know, it's going to be the parents and the children that live here. We all talk about people coming with hotels and restaurants. We, we talked about the thousands of people that are going to come to the California Space Agency and all of this. We won't have room to accommodate all of those people. The studies will show that the traffic and all of this may be, you know, something that will cost a lot of money. But that's okay. I don't want to turn down a project because of that. Certainly, I don't. What I do want to make sure is that if this project is going to go alone, it has to succeed. Because we're going to put effort and money in it. And if it doesn't succeed, then we all lose. This city loses and you all lose. We all lose. So we need to put things in that MOU that will ensure that this project succeeds. And that's where I really like the council to see that can make those decisions. Not just doing it, well, let's go for it. You know, we are saying, let's go for it. We need to do economic development, but we have limited resources. And we need to use them where they have a good chance of success. That's what I see right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I'm glad that Ruth brought up the rich history of Lompoc with racing. So there's somebody in, in the audience today who showed me a photo, and I remember the Model T and Model A racing, of my grandfather, Joe Costa, and his best friend, Tilden Bergeli. So those photos, to me, are Lompoc's history. I'm third generation here. I understand that rich history. I know that there's some of you in the back who recognize the name Team Tenacity. So that's another, there was a car club that my sister was a part of growing up, you know, part of the camaraderie and understanding the benefit of working with your hands and valuing what you own. So I understand these things. I wanted to put that out there. That said, part of my job is due diligence, focusing on analysis, and of course, a fiduciary duty to the city. Many times, and I say many because it's more often than not, I have to be the bad guy. But- But today, I'm happy to say, I get to be the good guy. I have concerns, but I'm confident that through the regulatory processes, we will be able to mitigate any potential negative impacts this project may have. With my previous comments and concerns recorded, staff, I hope you took that into note, into consideration. I'm in support of this project and in support of staff coming back with an MOU, setting out timelines and criteria for the process we're going to need to go through. Now that said, this is going to be an uphill battle. I mean, there is not one government agency that isn't on your list that you're going to have to get through and talk to. That is going to be a nightmare. So I'm glad that there's this many folks from the community who are here, and I want to stress to you, you're going to have to be here every step of the way, with every agency, at every meeting, with your continued support to see the success. I want this to succeed. I appreciate Councilmember Martin's statements, and I agree with her wholeheartedly that MOU, I'm really looking forward to seeing that, and we may need to work with that a little bit, but I am in support of this project. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that I'm hearing some positive comments from the council as well as the positive comments that we've heard out there. As we were hearing public comment, it, I don't know if, it seems like we have all motor sports fans out there, but if you have, do we have any hockey fans out there? Hopefully, one or two at least? There are a couple out there. Okay. Yeah, three of you. Okay, good. I was watching the LA Kings game last night, and at the end of the, I believe it was the first, I used to say quarter, but it's periods in hockey. At the end of the first period, I believe the score was 0-0. And the announcer was interviewing Wayne Gretzky, one of the, not one of the, probably the, one of the greatest hockey players ever. And the interviewer said, "Mr. Gretzky, what's it going to take for a team to win this game?" Well, got me thinking, we are a team here, and we want to win. The answer that Wayne Gretzky gave is, they have to start taking some shots. Well, guess what? We need to start taking some shots. Now, we took a shot, and I appreciate my fellow council members' comments that the space center that we recently approved, an exclusive, non-negotiating agreement with, we hope it all goes. It may not. It's a shot we're going to take, and, but I think it's a positive shot. This is a shot, if we want to become winners in our, well, not in our community, in the central coast, we have to take shots like this. And yes, I think they, you all know what it's going to take. It is an uphill battle, as Councilmember Martin said. And I hope that we, as a council, are with you all the way to help with this uphill battle because it is going to be tough. Now, the MOU that we need to have written, that we all have to sign, we as a council have to make sure that this MOU is not the stumbling block that makes it fail. We have to have a lot of common sense. We have to have things that protect not only the foundation, but the city. Now, the city, it's, the MOU is, it's a mutual agreement, okay? So it has to benefit both. You're going to be working with our attorneys to design this MOU. It's going to come back to us. We're going to have some input, but it cannot become a stumbling block. It has to be protective of your assets, of you, the city, and the city's assets, but it can't become a stumbling block. So let's take the shot and let's get this thing on the road. Or not, I mean, off the road, I'm sorry.
Councilmember, um...
Starbuck.
Starbuck, yeah.
Thank you. Ironic that you would bring up the Model T races because I was going to, but even before that, they raced horses on Ocean and H, so we did have that racing heritage. There is an old racing axiom. It's called, you know, how do you make a small fortune racing? You start with a large one. So the rest of that money has to come here someplace, and I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion on this.
No, I get a turn. Come on.
Oh, you.
Yeah, oh, you. You know, I, I agree completely with what Councilmember Lingle just said, and we have the good and the bad to choose from. We had a pretty basic agreement, and we built a dog park successfully with a very small amount of local money raised and a very large amount of time and materials donated. I think three quarters of the process were donated labor and materials, and a quarter of the process was money that was raised to get it done. And I, I think the same thing's going to happen here. The numbers are just going to be a little bit bigger. I think that $15,000 that we raised to build the dog park might be a little short of what you guys need. And then we have the opposite. We have a downtown park where an agreement was never reached, and by the time it was reached, there was no longer the desire to go forward. The economy had changed, the donations weren't available, what have you. Everything changed because it took two years to get it done. And I think the important thing here is that we get it done, and we get it done quickly, and it comes back to the council, and we make the corrections that we feel are needed to fulfill our duty to all the citizens of Lompoc. I realize you got 10,000 signatures, but there's 40,000 people, so you only represent 25% of the city right now. If you keep working on that, it could get to 50%, or 51%, it'll make it easier. I've spent a lot of time on this, looking out into the future and looking at all of the things that could go wrong. And I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have been so enthusiastic for so long if I didn't think we could get it done. But I want to say one thing to all of you. If it, if it came to the point where we were going to risk the city of Lompoc to build a drag strip, then I couldn't vote for it. I don't believe we're anywhere near that. I don't think that problem exists, but you just need to know that all of us have that responsibility. And I know you guys all do, and nobody out here is going to want something bad, and we know that. We all want something good, right? Okay. So I still don't see anything that scares me away. I think the financial report actually made me a lot more comfortable because that was the part that I just had trouble getting my brain wrapped around. It is, could this dream be true? And I think the answer is, it could be. With my conversations with the FAA, I don't, I don't have any big concerns there. We did some due diligence back in 2008 with regard to the environmental issues for that site, and actually had an informal inspection of it, and we didn't find any tar weeds, so life was good. And we also looked at the environmental reports for adjoining properties and didn't find any issues there, so I have a pretty good feeling about that. The one that was always a great struggle to me was FEMA, and there's a way to build it and make it temporary, which isn't much fun, and, you know, that was always the fallback plan. But after Bob and I's chat in Washington, I feel a lot better about that. And so I think we're, I think we're charging toward a home run. I'm a little less concerned about spending some city staff time because I think it's more a matter of holding you guys' hand and showing you how to go forward, not that we're going to go forward for you. And I think you know that every one of us up here is willing to help in any way we can to help you go forward. So now you can make a motion. I got my five cents in. Thanks. Appreciate it.
I'd like to go ahead and move that we provide staff time to go ahead and help the applicant proceed with the preparation of analysis to identify issues and the MOU.
Hang on a second.
I'll second.
Is there further discussion? Is the motion clear? Yes? Motion clear? Okay. No further discussion. Could we vote, please? That pass is 5-0. We call that... Ah, but wait, we have two more exciting items. You can stay. We have the San Ynez Riverbank stabilization. Not so much. Okay. Hey, thanks, everybody, for coming. We'll see you next time we talk about this. Okay. And next up, the San Ynez Riverbank Stabilization Project Grant Applications Update. Civil engineer Craig, where are you? There you are. Welcome to the podium.
All right. Thanks, Mayor and councilmembers.
And before you get started, I just want to tell you guys that getting to this step is four years' worth of dreams, so thanks.
All right. As was mentioned, this item is on the San Ynez Riverbank Stabilization Project, and it's both an update on a few grant application opportunities as well as a request on how to proceed, direction on how to proceed with one specific opportunity. Little history back in February, February 1st of 2011, the council received a project update that was technically specific, describing the proposed systems, and directed staff to pursue funding to install those systems at two locations on the western San Ynez Riverbank, one north of Barton Avenue and another between North Avenue and Pine Avenue. On September 20th, 2011, staff came back to council with a few grant opportunities, and council directed staff to proceed with submitting applications to those two programs. In November of 2011, staff was, staff submitted a third pre-application, which is the, kind of the main subject of this topic tonight. That program was the California, well, the application was to the California Emergency Management Agency, CALIMA, and the program was called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. CALIMA recently notified staff that they've selected this project for complete grant application development for submittal to FEMA, and staff is currently working with CALIMA to develop that complete application, which is due to CALIMA June 15th. One catch with the application is that FEMA requires a 25% funding match and requires the letter be provided with the application committing to that 25% funding match. Staff plans to continue pursuing additional grant funding to cover that match, but we have not secured any yet. So in the absence of outside funding to cover that 25% match, the staff report proposes a few revenue types to cover that match, including city road and utility funds and city park improvement impact fees in the amounts listed in the staff report. And just to go over updates on the two other grant applications that are not as much the focus of this report, the California River Parkway's Grant Program, which was the one we were most hopeful for because it could provide up to 100% of project funding, requiring no local match. That one, we have not heard back yet whether the project has been selected. If the project is selected by state staff, there should be a site visit in July, is the word that we hear from state staff. So haven't heard whether it's selected yet, but if so, it sounds like we should hear in the near future, and a site visit would be set up. Then in the fall, they would recommend the funding decision be made, so even after the site visit, it isn't for sure. If the project is fully funded under that California River Parkway's Grant Program, staff, city staff suggests withdrawing from these other grant programs that require a match. And another, other update on another program, staff submitted a grant application to the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program and received word from CALIMA that because that is a FEMA program, and this one that we're talking about tonight is also a FEMA program, and FEMA doesn't allow you to double dip or have, be processed under two, for duplicate funding under two programs, they're taking us off the table for that one and focusing on this one since this program apparently is more certain. In summary, of the three grant programs which city staff has submitted applications so far for this project during 2011, only the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program has provided a positive response, and the California River Parkway's Grant Program has not yet provided any response. City staff requests council authorization or alternate direction related to submittal of a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program application to CALIMA for funding up to 75% of the cost of this project, and the submittal of a 25% funding match commitment letter as described in the staff report and in Resolution 579312. I'd like to answer any questions now.
The other grant that we couldn't apply for, did it have a better matching component than this one, or was this the better matching component? Were they a toss?
The two FEMA grants were the same. It was 75-25.
And this is the one for which we seem more technically qualified?
Well, I guess we are qualified for both, but apparently this one is dependent upon a disaster declaration, and then once you're in a zone that has that declaration, apparently it's not quite as competitive as the other program, so more, more certain for funding. And the other program is, has a lot more applicants.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Craig, so what you're asking us to do tonight is authorize submitting a letter indicating that we will be willing to obligate ourselves for 25% if the grant is awarded, but you're also stating that in the event we get a favorable response from the California River and Parkway's program, 100%, then we will withdraw our application and we will not be then responsible for the 25% for the other grant. Is that correct?
That is our intent, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. If we receive the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, is there a timeline we would have to present that we've confirmed we would be providing that 25%? Or are we locked in to providing that by submitting the application in and of itself?
I believe that we won't hear back on whether we're accepted or not until a few months down the road, at which time we should have heard back on the California River Parkway's grant. And I believe that there's an agreement that needs to be entered into at that time related to matching funds and other things. So, so I don't think the submittal locks you in 100%.
Because that would be my concern, is if for some reason, council's having difficulty wanting to commit the 25%, you know, if we would be required to provide that, or if we could just scrub the project and start with something else. Because my concern, the reason I say that, is, and Mr. Wilkie, if you could comment on this, you know, the park improvement impact fees I thought was for a new park improvement. This, it looks like the staff would be correct, but I just wanted to confirm that park improvement impact fees could be used towards that 25% matching.
There are two components to the park impact fees. One is for acquisition of property, and one is for the improvements. And this, while it may not be an actual, it wouldn't create something that's usable in the end, it's an improvement that would safeguard existing parks that we have. So we think it would be eligible use.
So just in the general sense, what's limiting the city from utilizing the park improvement impact fees for some of the current parks that we have now? It's just a matter of presenting projects and getting that funded through that source?
Well, it's only for capital improvements, and this would be a capital improvement, so it wouldn't be for things of the nature of operations and maintenance, but it could be used, the 1.3 million that's available in that fund can be used for other capital improvements in the various parks in the city. It would just have to be a project that would come through, typically through the normal budget process, the two-year budget process we typically go through.
So if I could make a comment now that I would like staff to look into this for potential capital improvements to some of our current parks, particularly what was discussed this evening, which was a concern of the rush rooms. I wanted to make sure that that's discussed during the budgetary times, but thank you for confirming about the 25% match.
A couple other possible sources for the 25% match. I had a discussion when, the first month I was mayor, after an SB CAG meeting, I met with the County Flood Control District, and there are two flood control districts in the Lompoc Valley. One is the one within the Lompoc city limits, which has a lot of property tax and accrues a lot of money. Unfortunately, this area, because it's not within the Lompoc city limits and not within the zone, that money couldn't be used. There is also a Lompoc Valley Flood Control District, and it doesn't tend to accrue as much money. I think back then it had 300,000 in the bank, but we might be able to acquire some percentage of that from those folks, and we should surely ask them as we go down the road. of that from those folks, and we should surely ask them as we go down the road. Secondly, this piece of property that, of which three-plus acres has washed away, has two things going for it that might help us. Number one, it was purchased partially with CREF funds, and so there may be a possibility, although those funds are smaller than they used to be, in another meeting I was at, there was a recent discussion of CREF funds, and there are funds available, and as the property was purchased with CREF funds and it's disappearing, the comment was that we should ask, because it may be viable to get a portion of the funds from them. And then the last part of it was that this was a biologically sensitive area. Most of what was sensitive isn't there anymore, but, you know, if we were to find a tarweed hanging on the edge of the bank, that might give us an option to seek some other funds for, for that. And I don't know what a tarweed looks like, so I couldn't find it, but I know in the original environmental report, the area that washed out is where they were, so that might be worth a look. Any questions before I go to public comment? Okay. All right, we're going to go to a public comment on this. If you'd like to talk to us about this item, stand up and come on down. Going once, going twice, gone, back to council. Okay. Council, do you have any more questions of staff this time? Everybody got them answered? Okay, then I'd accept a motion.
Marilyn, understanding that I would, of course, prefer staff continue to diligently look for potential funding sources, and that there is no guarantee, I think, that council would approve that 25% match, I think that it's still worth going forward with this as a potential funding source, understanding that, of course, that is an issue and a need in our community. You know, without a lot of rain, it's not on everybody's mind, but as soon as we get that heavy rain again, people are going to start realizing why it's such a necessity. So that said, I move staff approval, or, excuse me, I move staff recommendation. Thank you.
And I think the other thing that's important to know about this, just to understand how serious this has now become, is that the washout is near, I think, 70 feet from the roundabout in the bike path, the only roundabout that works. And the only thing that prevented the water from going into Riverbend Park last time are a bunch of old cars chained together on the river, which forced the water back out into the riverbed. And if we lose those in one big rain, we could have a river in Riverbend Park, which is what it was named for. Is there any other discussion? And could we go ahead and vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Now we're going to go back to item number 11.
First of all, this item is actually for the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, because it is the entity that was assigned the responsibilities and obligations of the former RDA's obligations and responsibilities. So, not that there's a physical difference in the board, but the difference is that the city has no obligation for former agency obligations. Nothing in the ABX-26 allows for the city to become responsible for any of the agency's debt. That was a primary consideration of the law because of all the various bonds that are out there throughout the state. The bonds are legally the responsibility of the redevelopment agency. With the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, that responsibility does not fall down to the city. If there's not enough tax increment to pay the bond payments, then the bondholders are left holding the bag. The state did not want that to happen, and I think in our situation, the amount of tax increment that we would have received over the life of the two bonds far exceeds the amount of the bond payments that are the two primary enforceable obligations that are being processed through this new enforceable obligations process. Having said that, ABX-26 was approved by the State Supreme Court in December, I think it was December 29th, 2011. The law required us to start providing information to the San Barbara County Auditor and Controller's Office. In early March, we had a meeting between all the city finance departments and the county auditor to go over the requirements of that law. The agreed-upon procedures that were disseminated by the Department of Finance, who was acting as the unofficial, I want to say...
Robber.
They, they consider them the ultimate arbiter of all the various activities, so, and they actually have a bill in the state legislature to actually increase their powers over this process. But that happened in March, early March. We received this application, this request from the grand jury the middle of March. We have had almost daily requests from the county auditor controller for volumes of information. Just today, they're asking for detailed payroll information for certain testing activities that they're trying to do to verify that we actually spent money out of the RDA properly in the timeframe between July 1st and January 31st. The amount of information that they're asking is voluminous. Right after that point in time, the grand jury put out their request to all the tax entities, all the agencies that have RDAs for similar but not the same information. Some of the information that they asked for goes back 10 years. We have that information in our annual reports that are, had been submitted by the agency annually. Those annual reports provided annual updates of where we are and the projects that we have, either ongoing projects, completed projects, new planned projects, and we had to do that on an annual basis. So if, and those back to, I think, 2001 are still on our website, so those, those reports are available. The grand jury went to the last report that was provided to the state controller's office and got some of their numbers from that. They did not ask for the things that were readily available from the agencies, they asked for information in their format so that they could present a picture of the agencies to see if they're, were properly using their tax increment for the purposes which are the removal of blight. Part of their request is to provide documentation on that, to say how much blight was removed by the various projects. That's something that's not really easy to quantify. We had the weed abatement program going on that was reported on the night. It's fairly easy to go out and say the weeds were cut, or the weeds weren't cut. Blight removal is something in between. So, one person may look at that and say, "That looks fine," and another person may look at it and say, "It's still blighted." But the, the purpose of redevelopment is to provide the resources to try to make the city better. And I believe that the reports that were presented over the last 10 years show the activities that the city, the agency did to try to get those programs implemented. And those programs were based on looking for economic development, which would, by some sort of definition, would remove blight, and to provide monies for community facilities, which we have used. I think one of the comments in the report was that the city, the agency, did not have any information on the completion of the Dewey Center. Well, right now, the Dewey Center is not completed, and so the agency didn't have opportunity to report on the completion of that facility. The report from the grand jury kind of inferred that, "Well, what are you trying to hide?" And it's not anything to do with that, it's just a matter of, it's reported to be completed when the actual project is completed. The information that was provided to the grand jury in response to their requests allowed for the dissemination of the information that was, that I talked about. What we're planning on doing with those annual reports is to take them out of the various agenda items that they are in over the last 10 years, and put them in a very obvious, accessible place for those that are looking for that information. And for the vast majority of items that they asked for, I think there's one recommendation and three findings, we are going to be providing that information on our website. We've set up a successor agency page on our website that will allow for this, the dissemination of the information that they asked for. I think I will leave that right now. I started off this process to say how much we had to do to get the information to the Department of Finance and to the state, the county auditor controller. And I prefaced everything with that because the amount of staff resources that we've had to devote to this process is, has been much greater than I think anybody anticipated, and I don't expect that to fall off anytime soon. Had we been just required to make our payments for our bonds, that is not an all-day event to do. So the actual payment of the enforceable obligations is a fairly minor thing. Us convincing and providing the proof to the county and the state that these are actually enforceable obligations, and where the agency's financial status was as of January 31st, is just, is an onerous process, and we've been complying with every request that we've gotten from both the Department of Finance and the state, the county auditor. So this process from the grand jury is just one thing on top of that that's asking for roughly the same information, just in a different way. And the response we made to the grand jury was to reflect that, that the information is there, we'll make it more, more visible, and I believe that was the information that they asked for, and we are providing that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add something to that, there was a comment made earlier about the agency, the redevelopment agency, having had $43 million in debt. I just want to say a little bit about this, this process. At the time that the grand jury was asking for information, we were not really very far along in the process of putting together these schedules of obligations. At the time the grand jury was asking for information, we were at the point of having done, of the successor agency having done the preliminary enforceable obligation payment schedule. And the timeline on getting that done was so short that the approach was, "When in doubt, put it on." And, and we'll deal later with, with whether the obligation is still outstanding, whether it qualifies as an enforceable obligation, et cetera. So for example, the enforceable obligation payment schedule included the concept of continuing to have that 20% set aside for low and moderate income housing every year, because at that point, it wasn't really clear, given some of the wording in AB-26, as to whether the obligation to keep that low and moderate income housing trust fund going still existed or not. So that accounts for some of the difference between the $43 million the grand jury thought they were seeing, as opposed to the $27 million that's in the response to the grand jury's inquiry. Another example is that the way these schedules are structured, there's a certain amount of double counting, because you put your bonds on the schedule, but because of the way the schedule is structured, you also have to include contracts for things like public improvements that might be paid for with the bond proceeds that you already have sitting in the bank. So it's, it's difficult with these schedules to even get a true picture of, of what the real liabilities were.
Not based on sound accounting principles by any stretch of the imagination.
Yes. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Mr. Wilkie, did we contact the other, I'm sorry if I missed this, did we contact the other cities to see what their responses were going to be like to this report?
I didn't reach out to the other cities, but what I did do was I went to the grand jury website, and there were two responses already posted at the time that we were preparing our response. And those two, one of which was a county, their responses were very much similar to what we have in our report to them.
Great. The other question is, I saw that it was due on the 3rd, assuming that we approve this and it gets submitted tomorrow, that's three days late. Is there any issues with that?
The, the actual staff report is asking, the recommendation on the staff report is a little bit different than what the recommendation is on the agenda, and the staff report was made in anticipation of this being provided to the grand jury in a timely fashion. So the staff report is actually asking the council to ratify the already submitted letter. And we did that because we did not want it to be late. And I went through the requirements that we had to go through, like June mentioned. We were trying to get a lot of the deadlines for the enforceable obligations to the state so we could get the tax increment that we need to pay our debt in the next six months. So this was something that was put off until later than it probably should have been, but the amount of resources we had available and the people that were working on this were already stretched thin because of the, the volume of information requests from the county and the state. So this was done, I think it was done well, it was just a matter of it was being done near the end of the nine-to-day window.
And are we still on schedule for some of the dates that, or some of the tasks that we have not yet achieved but have future dates, such as June 15th, June 30th, by the end of June 30th and such?
We talked about that at staff level to make sure that we thought we had enough time to put those up there. Those two dates were picked to allow a little bit of time for each task, but as I said, one of these is just simply moving existing staff reports that are on the website to a centralized location, and that shouldn't take very much time at all.
And then you mentioned, you know, the, the big challenge here is going to be getting the county as well as the State Department of Finance to accept these enforceable obligations as an actual enforceable obligation, but isn't this the same true to be said of the oversight, the newly created oversight board as well?
If you recall, before I presented the GAN limit public hearing, the oversight board had four meetings. They had one on April 9th, April 16th, May 14th, and May 21st. During those four meetings, we worked through trying to get the two sets of enforceable obligations, one for the current six months and one for the next six months. On the May 21st meeting, both of those were approved by the oversight board. The day after that, they were assigned by that oversight board chairman, and that same day, they were electronically submitted to the county and the state Department of Finance. The Department of Finance at about 7:45 on Friday night of a three-day weekend, sent back their response approving their ROPS so that the county could provide us the money by June 1st. So that approval has already happened, it happened on May 21st by the oversight board and May 25th by the Department of Finance.
And can you recall, how many items did the oversight board take off of that enforceable obligation schedule?
The original enforceable obligation schedule that was submitted at the April 9th meeting had 12 items on it. Three loans between the city and the agency, they, those three loans were taken off, and three other things were taken off, the graffiti abatement program, the PAL program, and some museum improvements.
And so as to what June stated, the number that we were looking at, instead of being $43 million, was something in the range of 24, is that correct?
I believe it was around 28.
Or 28, excuse me, yes.
That adds to that number. But the amount that is going to come from tax increment is about 28.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take a second, go to public comment. Anybody want to get up and say something?
Honorable mayor, fellow council members, I'd like to, my name's Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I'd like to thank Mr. Wilkie for his explanation. And it sheds light, because when you look at the agendaized items on the website, what you see is the letter requesting information from the grand jury, and then you see the city's response. And when you read through it and you read an item that says finding four, Lompoc over the last past 11 years spent $24 million, received 18.6 million in tax increment, and has $43.8 million in outstanding long-term debt and obligations. The average resident is not going to understand this jargon that's, that's within there. And it'd be very helpful that with items of such magnitude, that they be at least briefly touched upon or explained by staff so that one can fully understand. Especially when there's an item like finding number eight. And this is, again, this was focused to all redevelopment agencies, but Lompoc, as the successor agency, needs to address it, finding eight. Detailed data are not available on the amount of money spent on individual projects, the receipts of the money, or how these projects have contributed to eliminating blight. So, again, there is a, there is an explanation, but it's an explanation that many people don't understand the jargon on. Moving forward was something that was a little bit of concern of mine, is that one of the recommendations of the grand jury was that all successor agencies provide on their websites their plans for defining and eliminating blight in the absence of the RDAs. Take in mind that this is the grand jury recommendation and the successor agency response, which is the city here, the recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted, nor is it reasonable. I was really confused when I read that because we're doing code enforcement, we're doing, you know, other items that are pertaining to blight removal and the cleanup, yet this seems to be in contradiction to that. So, again, I, I respect the, the explanation. And then there's other concerns in reading as this unwinding of the redevelopments take place. I know in the past, some of the administrative budget's been about upwards of 400, 450,000. And the limit by the state has been 250,000. That's a $200,000 deficit, and it's not being discussed. Where's it going to come from? I, I just heard that it's not going to be, it's not going to come from, from the general fund, and I'd like confirmation of that. Secondly, there are properties that are being held by the RDA. I serve on the planning commission, and I'm not here as a representative of the planning commission, but I'm concerned because we're doing all this work and we have our parking lots that are in the Old Town that we may have to liquidate. I have heard no discussion on that. We have the economic development committee is doing the same thing. So, I mean, I'm kind of feeling like we're putting a cart in front of the horse here and we're not discussing some pertinent items and we're throwing them in at a consent calendar when we need to start discussing these things, especially when we have a lot of community members spending a lot of time on items that may have to be unwound as a result of the RDA and the state dissolving the redevelopment agencies. And that's why I request that we pull this from the consent item. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me address a couple of your questions. When the RDA program went away, two full-time staff positions were eliminated and those two persons were transferred to other jobs in the city that, in jobs that were currently vacant. And the, the city administration has reviewed all of those and achieved savings equal to the amount of the loss with regard to the 400 versus 250, just in a general sense. The question of the RDA properties is, is a question that's come up recently, and initially my concern was the same as yours. However, I've learned two things. Number one, the state only wants to steal parking lots that make money. They, they're not too enthusiastic about stealing the ones that don't have income, yet. But perhaps much more important, actually, the bulk of the funds for those parking lots was through CDBG funds. And so, the RDA only provided a small percentage of the acquisition cost. And then they provided the maintenance cost over the years. And so far, there hasn't been any effort on the part of the state to make us pay back maintenance that was done by the RDA in the name of blight removal. So, a week ago, I was, I shared your concerns. Today, I'm probably a little less concerned and, but a little more detailed information on that will be forthcoming. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn Lynn. You know, I think that a good point was brought up, you know, as we all know with the passage of AB 26, you know, not only are we really unsure what's coming up next and how to handle everything, even in a legal sense, but it doesn't sound like the legislators who passed it really know what they did by passing it. So, there's so much unknown right now, and I think that that's the big frustration for most municipalities dealing with the dissolution. That said, I think it may be a good idea, as we are treading through this process, when we get to a good point, maybe in the state administrator's report, we can provide, you know, kind of a, a general sense what's happened with RDA. You can make it very easy for everybody to understand, because we do things here and there and that, you know, me, I, I wasn't even fully aware of, of the elimination of the two positions. So, you know, things like that to just kind of say, you know, this was AB, ABX 26, in general, this is what happened. This is what we've done in the meantime, including the grand jury report, including the meetings of the oversight board, and here we are today. You know, and just kind of do just a very general report from the city administrator's seat. I think that that might be helpful for the community and for council as well.
I agree absolutely. Is there any other discussion on this item? And if not, I would accept a motion to go forward. I move we accept staff recommendations.
I'll second.
And just to be sure, are we accepting the staff recommendation on, this is a question for you, Brad, on the staff report or the staff recommendation on the agenda? Tell me, tell me which one we're accepting.
I'd rather be the one on the staff report.
Okay. So, we're, everybody's good with that, right? Okay. And is there any for, I'm sorry? Yeah. We'll come back to that in a sec. Let's finish this. Is any, any further discussion on this? And this is a vote to approve the staff recommendation on the staff report. Please vote. Okay. And city administrator, I think, are you clear about what kind of a little discussion to come back with?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd also advise that-
And that passed 5-0.
Mr. Wilkie, you'll be bringing a report the 19th regarding the budget.
That's correct, yeah.
So, you'll hear more the next meeting.
Okay. Got that one done. Moving on to our last, hm? No? We still have the things at the end. Written communications. Do we have any other written communications? No. Oral communications. Your last chance out there to get two minutes. Come on down.
Honorable mayor, council members, Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I am confused because in the response to the grand jury, there's, I, I mentioned that statement that all successor agencies provide on their websites their plans for defining and eliminating blight in the absence of the RDAs. And you've just approved a recommendation that the recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted, nor is it reasonable. What implication does that have to everything else that we're doing with code enforcement and all the other items that are designed to eliminate blight?
I think we'll find that out when we get the city administrator's report next time around. Councilmember Costa.
Marilyn, I'm under the impression we're still doing everything. We're just not going to post that information on our website as requested by the grand jury. That's the only difference. We're just not going to post it. And Mr. Wilkie, can you please confirm that in reading those other two, were there similar responses in, in regards to that recommendation? Or are we sort of the Lone Ranger and saying no in that aspect?
The county, county response to that was almost the same, that they weren't going to implement it. So, and the Santa Maria one, which was the other one that was up there, they have a totally different situation. Their agency has been inactive for over 10 years, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add something to that. The job of the successor agency is to wind up what the redevelopment agency had going on February 1st, 2012. It is not the job of the successor agency under AB 26 to continue with eliminating blight. It's, it's a little bit of a paradox because the redevelopment law hasn't been repealed and the authority of the redevelopment agencies has been transferred to the successor agencies. But effectively, the successor agencies have been told by the legislature not to exercise most of that authority and to just focus on winding up what the redevelopment agency was committed to doing. So, it, it would be a fiction to put something on the website saying, here's what the successor agency is going to do about blight, because there, there effectively is no longer a program for eliminating blight. Code enforcement is primarily a city function and it will continue. What the redevelopment law has in, has in, had, I guess I should say, in mind as far as eliminating blight goes far beyond code enforcement. But it's, it's essentially defunct. There, at present, there is no future for the type of addressing blight that redevelopment agencies used to do. Or for that matter, the type of encouraging affordable housing that redevelopment agencies used to do.
Marilyn, I request that this kind of information be included in the city administrator's update. That will be at the beginning of the meeting when there's a lot of people watching rather than at the very tail end. Thanks.
All right. Now we have council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Martin, do you want to go first? Because you said you needed to get out of here.
I need to get out of here at 11:00. I don't have anything to report.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn Lynn. You know, when, when you and I showed up to Citywide Cleanup Day, that was essentially sponsored by the faith-based community, it sort of made me realize, you know, why that hasn't become an official city event. You know, I think that that's something that if advertised well enough and is done on behalf of the city, we're already out there. I mean, our, you know, the police captains were out there, there was police presence in some of the areas that we were in when we were painting. We're relatively unsafe, so there was police presence just in case, you know, there was solid waste. So, my point is that I think that we can make this event even larger. Like you said, the, you were interested in some kind of city-wide field cleanup, but that could almost be included in one event that I feel like should be, you know, and there, it doesn't need to be any additional cost to the city, because like I said, the workers were already there, some kind of city-wide cleanup and make it an even bigger thing. It was such an amazing experience of community where we're all just getting really dirty and painting and pulling weeds and really feeling like you're doing something for the community. So, I just wanted to throw that idea out there. I know we have tons of other priorities and many other things going on, and I hate to just add this to the list, but I just thought if council was interested, that might be something that they'd be willing to consider.
Well, I think maybe it's just a matter of doing wider recruitment. I mean, the, the event already exists, the work's already done, it's just a matter of getting more feet on the ground is what you're suggesting.
Right. And I think that we can do that by making it a, an official city event.
We can look into that for sure. Absolutely.
And then the other thing I, well, I guess I would need a second and a third to put that on an agenda, correct?
How about if we just let the city administrator take a look at it and come back to us rather than creating an agenda item, she could give us a brief report on it?
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with that. The next one I would need, a second and a third for an agenda item. Marilyn, I believe that you will be meeting with some folks tomorrow, and I may be there as well, in regards to a concern in the community about reservations out at Halama Beach. And so, I think to sort of proactively deal with that, we should talk about writing a letter to the county to attempt to come up with some kind of compromise that would assist local folks in being able to have a first-come, first-served basis if, whatever it is, some kind of compromise that gives us back our beach, because the county has not done us well in regards to our coastline. And, and I really don't want to see it happen again out at Halama where reservations are completely online and city residents no longer have, you know, any kind of upper hand in, in going to a local beach. So, for me, that's a problem, and I would like to see us talk about a potential letter to try to lobby the county to ensure that we have our coastline.
I'm, I'm not familiar with what the deadline is. I think we need to extend a couple of minutes.
Motion to extend a few minutes? 15 minutes?
Okay, 15 minutes and a second. And a vote. Passes 5-0, extended 15 minutes.
So, the action of the county has already basically been taken in regards to purchasing this online reservation system. And I don't think it's a matter of wanting to completely change the way that they're moving, but really just attempt to represent the citizens of Lompoc in that they should have some benefit for supporting the beach year-round. And, you know, some of that benefit should be during the summer months when we want to camp there as well. So, I wanted to bring that to council, hoping that we could agendaize that and put together a letter that we could send to the county.
Yeah, I agree with that completely.
I would second.
Everybody good with that? Okay, got it. Councilmember Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. On May 22nd, I met with San Barbara Foundation to discuss several projects that they are considering funding for, inside the city. Some of them are city projects, many of them are just community projects. And then on February, or excuse me, May 23rd, 24th, I was on an NCPA trip, and the city did pay for my mileage and my, and lodging on that trip.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to toss in that I attended two services on Memorial Day. One was by American Legion Post 211 at the Lompoc Cemetery. Base commander was a speaker out there, it was a very well-attended ceremony. And at one that afternoon, I attended a Veterans of Foreign War ceremony at the Vietnam Memorial out at River Park. There was also the medical, the colonel in charge of the medical out there spoke at that. It was well-attended also. And just this last Sunday, I went to the Flower Festival Queen Races, and I got to say, that's going to be a fun annual event, so you ought to kind of keep your ears open for that one. That's, that's a good fundraiser for the festival association and the candidates.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn Lynn. Because we didn't talk about meeting reports at the last meeting, there's been a few meetings from a while back I didn't mention, which was on May 17th. Marilyn and I saw each other that, basically that entire day, it felt like, starting in Santa Barbara with the annual tourism luncheon, which was really wonderful at the Bacara Hotel, was absolutely beautiful. There was no cost to the city for that, but definitely gained some great resources and some good contacts there. Went then to Cabrillo High School to judge some of the senior projects, which was really fun and interesting to see, things from couponing to a 5K and things like that. It was really great. Also, Excel Personnel Services had their chamber mixer, and that was really successful there in the Lilly Building. I mean, it was beautiful, a great event, and Excel's a, a great business here in our community, helping folks get employed, which was really great. Also, Longoria, the winery, had an open house, which was great because Rick Longoria was there and I got to say thank you for everything that he's done for our community. And, you know, I think it was his 30, 25 or 30 years-
30, 30 years.
-in the business, you know, and he's really, if you, if you know wine, you know, he's one of those names that gets thrown out there regardless of where you are in the United States. It's not just a local name. So, that was great to see him. And then additionally, that also, the day was the Boys and Girls Club Teen Outreach Program graduation. So, once again, Boys and Girls Club, a great nonprofit, doing some really wonderful things in our community, and that was lively as always. So, thank you.
Yes. I think we were together at every event except one. The, the two veterans events I attended on behalf of the city and represented the city were just great, and Councilmember Lingel was there with us too. I did spend just a teeny amount of city money. I was reimbursed for mileage for a trip to Long Beach. And this came along, council, everybody remembers, we gave a letter of support to the school district to get the natural gas fueling station. And after they got it, I had a chat with the gentleman from Southern California Gas Company just to find out how we could benefit from a public fueling station. He said, well, you should come to this show in Long Beach Wednesday. That was on Friday. And so, I drove down there in the wee hours of the morning and spent the day at the alternate fuel vehicle show. And not to keep Councilmember Martin or too late, but the show was almost exclusively focused on natural gas. focused on natural gas vehicles, electric vehicles were kind of over in the corner, because the cost of natural gas has dropped like a brick, and depending on whose booth you believed as you walked through the place, there's either a two or a three-hundred-year supply of natural gas. So, Honda now makes a car, Chevy makes a truck, two trucks and two vans, Ford makes two trucks and three vans, including a minivan, Dodge makes two trucks, Peterbilt, Kenworth, and Freightliner and Mack all have natural gas-fueled trucks. And so, I brought back for the city staff and the school district information on all of those vehicles, also on natural gas engine replacements, and a plethora of information. I had hoped to come back with conversion technology that we could all use to convert some of our vehicles to natural gas, and it was everywhere, and it was all approved by the EPA, and I was feeling all good, and they said, oh, you're from California. There's no California Air Resources Board approval for any retrofit device. They're too busy to look at them. So, we're in the state of no, you can't. Because it's been a long time between meetings, I'm just going to guesstimate and say I was at about forty-five meetings and events, and if anybody's dying to look at my appointment book, come on down. But the other thing that I would say is, we have amazing, amazing impetus in economic development, and people are now coming to us. I was contacted yesterday by four prospects and two more today. So, the word's getting out. And the last thing I would share is, the guys from Denmat have been talking to us, and they've been thanking us and the city staff for helping them, and the one thing they said was, we were kind of nervous about you guys at first, we thought you were too good to be true, but you're doing what you said you would do, so, all good things. We will therefore adjourn to the Lompoc City Council meeting, a joint meeting with the Youth Commission at six-thirty PM on June nineteenth, except we'll Yeah, well, it's not on here. Nope. It's not on here. So, we may have a special meeting on June twelfth. We do have a special meeting on June twelfth. I stand corrected and hereby correct the agenda. We have a special meeting on June twelfth, and we look forward to seeing all of you here again. Thank you for staying.